Thank you, everyone. I'd like to call to order the City of Sagatuck City Council Workshop for Wednesday, February 21st. If the clerk could please call the roll.
Anderson, here.
Baldwin.
Here.
Dean.
Here.
Partner.
Here.
Wensley.
Here.
Stan.
Here.
White.
Here.
You have a form?
All right. At this time, we are on to agenda changes, and I do would like to move item 6J, request for proposal, the Oval Beach concession stand, to item 6A, and move item 6K, equipment purchase asphalt hotbox, item to 6B, and add a closed session item to discuss a confidential written legal opinion regarding a personnel matter to item number eight on the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Move to move item 6J, request for proposal, Oval Beach concession stand is item 6A, move item 6K, equipment purchase asphalt hotbox is item 6B, and add closed session as item number eight.
Do I have a second? All right, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes. Opposed? Right, motion carries. Any guest speakers? Jamie? Nope. All right, so we are on to the public comment on agenda items only, and before we get to that point, I would just like to remind everyone that if you do have a public comment today, to state your name and where you live, and at this time, comment again on agenda items only. So if you haven't had a chance to read the agenda, there is agenda items over there that you can read through. Make sure you're commenting on agenda items only at this point in the meeting. And also a reminder that this is a city council workshop. No decisions are being made today. This is for discussion items only. If you have any questions during your time where you're speaking, feel free to pose the question during your public comment, but we won't engage in a question and answer session at that time. But we can address your questions during council discussions. So I just want to remind you all of that. So if anyone in the room would like to speak, please come to the podium. One at a time.
Catherine Simon, 428 Butler Street. I'd like to address the concerns the council has relative to the short-term rentals. As a business owner of a lodging establishment, I can assure you I view short-term rentals in some respects as competition, but in the big picture, no. We need the short-term rentals. This is a tourism community. I agree that there have been disturbances and there are genuine concerns about some of the guests to our community. But I can tell you, having been here 35 years, that the city has failed over those years to even manage the noise ordinance. So I would suggest very strongly, since we already have five restaurants that have left this winter, and many of us depend on short-term rentals to fill the community during the visiting season, which is 12 to 16 weeks, period. Okay? It's an important ingredient. We have no agriculture, no industrial, et cetera. That's it. Tourism is our industry. So I look to all of you to support it, not to rebuff it. I would also hope that we could do more to invite better businesses to come here. We don't do anything to engender that. We're going to get to be known as a town that doesn't welcome people. So that's my comment. I hope we can improve the way we govern it rather than take the quick view to eliminate it. Thank you.
Fox, I stood up early, so I got out of here early. Sorry. I had a comment really just about process, process related to the short-term rental ordinances. I was on the planning commission before this all came to a head. And quite honestly, I was happy to be off the planning commission when it did come to a head because it is a thorny issue, as we all know, I guess. But in that regard, I had high praise for the short-term rental task force. And I must admit, I didn't, I didn't study every single thing you did, but everything I saw from the beginning of the high school, the meeting over at the high school and stuff, it looked open. It had real community involvement, a lot of people, whatever. And that's my only suggestion to you. I didn't read every word in these ordinances, and I'll bet you none of you did either, or... It's a lot of stuff. It's a lot of stuff with a lot of implications for a lot of people. I would suggest, in the same spirit that led you to have that open meeting at the high school, you do the same kind of thing with these three or four, I can't remember what it is, ordinances, to explain them to the community, rather than think that, oh, you know, we passed them at a workshop, and then we do it on Monday, and we pass them, and then it's all done. I mean, you're, you know, people, you know, this is the largest group I've seen in a workshop ever. But even with that, you know, somebody, just lay it out. You know, what's the deal? What does this mean to me? You know, what does this mean to you? What does this mean to me? The same kind of opening it started with, it should quote unquote, finish with. So that's my suggestion. Thanks. Ben Fox, City of Sagatuck. You got me?
Hi, Tanner Graff with Lighthouse Realty.
You are?
Tanner Graff, Lighthouse Realty, Sagatuck, Douglas. So I've been coming to this community since I was born. Knee-high, and it's always been a wonderful resort community with rentals. And when I graduated Hope in '92, I got involved with purchasing commercial property downtown. So I own a commercial property that I've had since '92. And so, that being said, I've been in the community 54 years, involved with real estate for 32 years. I've sold a lot of property in town, commercial, residential. I'm currently involved in negotiations right now with a $4 million property, which has rental history on it, on the water. I'm also getting involved with a $1 million property up on the hill that has rental history to it, and a $3 million property on the water that does not have rental history to it. So my question is, do the math, that's $8 million worth of business. What do I tell my clients when it comes to rental on the existing properties I'm trying to work out deals with, what they can do, what they cannot do? I would like to know some facts about previous houses that have had rentals in them, if they can go forward with rentals. I kind of understand that you might be talking about a moratorium on future sales or rentals, but I just don't know how to address my clients with properties that are trying to sell and have rental history. I hope you do the right thing and let those properties move on with their rentals. It's an important part of our commerce, and the fact that we get people in, like Catherine said, some, you know, restaurants are closing, and this has always been a rental town. I've seen some bad things happen in Park Township, and Spring Lake Township, and as well in South Haven. But our livelihood is our summer season and welcoming people to the community, and they need logic. There are not enough hotels, or motels, or holiday inns. So these other rentals are important. People come back year and year and year and year afterwards and often use the same rentals. So give it some good consideration, please.
Thanks, Dan.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Kathy Brockington, and I live at 989 Singapore Drive. And my family has been here since Singapore. And I still have a house in Sagatuck because my husband and I were lucky enough when we moved to Kalamazoo to get a piece of property that nobody wanted, and we could afford, and we built the house because we couldn't afford anything that was for sale, and that was 20 years ago, because we wanted to move back home. Now, the only way you can get property in Sagatuck is to inherit it, or have an unlimited budget, or buy something you can't afford and rent it out. So I'm here to speak to you for my remaining 2 minutes and 27 seconds about the short-term rental issue. According to what was the agenda before you just changed it, so I can't, I didn't, I didn't take notes fast enough. What was the old 6A, the zoning ordinance amendment? I like the changes that you did to that. The 6D, which was the short-term rental lease power moratorium. Oh, I want to talk to that last. 6E, I don't need any paper for that one. That was the intergovernmental agreement for the minor revisions of the Blue Star Trail. I have a question. I'd like to know what side of the street that's going to be on North Street? Because I have property, and my sister has property, and my other sister has property, and we'd like to know if we're going to lose our front yards for the Blue Star Trail. So I'd like to see a really good map of that. As far as, let's see, did I say 6B, you did a great job on creating the police powers licensing ordinance and all its facets. 6A, support changes to the zoning ordinance amendment. Okay, now 6D. In a community of 850 registered voters, there's no excuse for us to have 225 short-term rentals. We want our community back. I strongly support the proposed six-month moratorium of STRs studying in the R1 residential zoning districts, and I urge you to do a careful study of those areas. I about fell off my chair when the speaker at the planning commission meeting from up north said they got on this five years ago, and they have 80 licenses in their resort community. I can't remember which one it was, but 80, and we have 285, for Pete's sake. I think that no new permit should be issued to residential zone areas until the number of units in other areas is down to 100. We have hotels, B&Bs, condos, et cetera, all that other stuff for short-term rental. Sagatuck has not been a rental community forever. A lot of people lived here a long time and built this community, working in the lumberyards, building the boats, building the, my father and his partners built a marina, somebody else built a Sagatuck marine. All these people built these businesses, and they lived in town. Reserve our community, please.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kathy.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Bob Gross. I live at 671 Spear with my partner. And we also have a business in Douglas. We own the design firm and Baker Furniture showroom there. We've had our businesses in Chicago, North Carolina, Grand Rapids, and now here. We decided to move here because we've been coming here for 33 years, which is where we met. And we've been looking for a house, and there are people in this room that know that, for that length of time. During that time, we just bought two years ago, the house. Our showroom opened in June of last year. But we wanted to live here. We, our business relies on tourism. And people from Chicago, Grand Rapids, when we were coming here for the past 30 years before we bought, we rented, us and our friends, we rented places in Sagatuck, Douglas, Spenville, most recently anywhere we could find a place. So I'm hoping, I've been following this very controversial subject through the local newspaper and other discussions with friends. I am well aware of the fact that there are, you know, large corporations that are buying up properties here to turn them into rentals, and all I'm asking for the benefit of our community, my business, is that, you know, we try to find some common ground. You know, the house next to us, watch my time, the house next to us is a rental. There are only three rentals on our street. We share a property line with another house on another street. There have been issues with that house. It's a non-resident, you know, owner that rents it out via RBO or ABR or whatever they're called. And we've had a couple issues, you know, loud noise, kids. But you know what? It's something to be, that you put up with. You know, it's not all the time. And if it becomes too onerous, we call our friends sitting over there in the corner. But, you know, I'm just here to voice my, our concerns and hope that you make the right decision in terms of coming up with a balance. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much.
Oh, my name is Eileen Raphael. I live at 569 Wirick Drive. Lived there for the past 21 years as a full-time resident. I'm just here to encourage you to place a six-month moratorium on issuing new short-term rentals. I think we've learned from the lessons of nearby communities, as well as probably from our own lived experience, that it is far more difficult to correct things in the past that have been done in the past, to go retroactively versus to forge the smart path and good path going forward. So I encourage you to give yourselves and the planning commission the six months' time to not make a situation any worse while you look at issues related to trying to make it better. I think that that will give you the opportunity to look at ensuring that Sagatuck remains not just a great place to visit, but a great place for us to live as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Eileen. Anyone else? Go ahead. Your council members, I'm back here again, and I talked Chris Peterson, 742 Plus Street. The last time I was here was when there was overwhelming opposition to the time the moratorium came up. And you created a wonderful committee with actually every person represented that could be there, and they identified the four areas of concern. And I think you've written them into the ordinance, and I suggest they are all adopted. But they did not recommend caps for moratoriums, but yet here we are again. So I don't know if it's private agendas getting here or what, but if this passes, and it passes Monday, my home is going to lose its value right away because you've removed an entire level of buyers. And it's going to affect all of us. And really, no one will know, it's been mentioned before, people don't stay as involved on what minutes are and things like that. When I was on the council, we had to have the ordinances on two different meetings. So that the first one, it was, it was shown, and then the second one, when it was passed. And right now, I can pretty much assure you that there are people up on the hill that have no idea that this is going to pass, and that their principal investment is going to go down in value. They have no idea of that. It's not in the paper, never gets covered in the paper. And, and we're not grandfathered. Those of us that have one, we're not grandfathered. All we get to do is keep it till our certificate runs out, then I'm assuming we're just thrown into the ballpark of, well, I hope, I hope that's not right. So again, what Catherine said, our only economy is tourism. And I look at this, that there are same people, same properties, let's work on those first. Let's go forward with the four noise, trash, those ordinances, but not start with the moratorium right away. Again, as an elected official, you represent not just the permanent residents, but all businesses and everything else. And it's very hard for me, as a previous elected official, to do something that will devalue the property of my constituents. So, thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
Our Godfrey, 550 Francis, and why I've heard enough, because it's really hard to suggest that your property will be devalued. If you're watching the market, if you're looking at the economy, and you're looking at the real estate here, I just don't see that as an equivalent equation here. So I discount that completely. I think what we know is at stake, you guys have studied this. We watched it last year. I don't know how you can arrive at this point in time and not do the moratorium. I think you owe that to yourselves, you owe that to the community, to take that time again, look at it, study it one more time, and go after it. Last weekend, nine cars in the driveway again, and I thought, here we go. So I'm certainly supportive of the moratorium. I don't think you have anything really to lose in that timeframe. It gives you more time, it gives us more time. We, we need to stop the behaviors of coming in and buying and selling for the purpose of rents. That's not how you build a community, and we know that. So let's get that straight. That's all I have to say. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
My name's Chris Raphael, 560 Wirick. I'm here to suggest that you do the moratorium. I think it's valid. I don't think the noise ordinance has gone far enough, so we don't need that because we walked on here, the community residential, maybe a lot of residential. It's very busy and really noisy. I'm here, I'm here, I'm here, and enjoying sitting on my property. It's this community of us, that of us.
Thanks, Chris.
Hi, Nancy Kimball, 550 Spear Street, live in the city of Sagatuck. And I'm commenting on the agenda item, which was 6D, the moratorium. And I first want to acknowledge all the good work that the planning commission has done, and also the short-term rental task force. I attended most of the meetings on this topic. So I can tell you that a lot of consideration has gone into this very thoughtfully, and I commend them for that. At the meeting on January 18th, we had officials from Charlevoix and East Bay Township. They talked about the short-term rentals and the issues that their residents had with them, and what they did about. Charlevoix put in a cap of 6% for the, for the single-family homes. 6%. East Bay Township was 2%. That's, that's what they did. They took care of the residents. I was thrilled at this meeting on February 15th, when, after everything was discussed and all of the lease powers were done, that it was also pointed out that we needed to address the fact that we just have too many, and it's continuing to grow. And it's grown in the years since we didn't pass the last moratorium. So I think they very thoughtfully suggested that we do a moratorium again, but this time only limited to the R1, mostly single-family homes. That made a lot of sense to me, and I hope you would give it the consideration that I think it deserves. These people have put a lot of time and effort into it. I just wanted to also comment that many neighborhoods in Sagatuck now have short-term rentals of 30% higher or more. So compare that to Charlevoix capping at 6%. That basically means that what were nice neighborhoods, short-term rentals or businesses, we all know that. So those are no longer residential neighborhoods. They're mixed-use areas, and they're not that pleasant to live in. My husband and I moved here five years ago, and frankly, we came from downtown Chicago, and I was so thrilled to be here. I thought I'd lived, we said, we'd moved to paradise. We were so excited. And yet, shortly after we got here, COVID came, we didn't know a soul. It was difficult to, you know, to get involved in the community, but we put some effort into it. I'm now on the board for the Friends of the Blue Star Trail. I, when the Parks Committee was created, I raised my hand for that and was thrilled to be appointed. So gotten myself immersed in the, in the community. I even convinced my son, who lived in California, to bring his family. And they now live in the city of Sagatuck, and I have two grandkids at Douglas Elementary. Friends of the Blue Star Trail Board has been shrinking. We need new members. I'm not here to lobby for that. I'm here to say that we can't find any because no one is moving into the community that is actual resident. Investors don't want to serve on our board. So I please urge you to pass the moratorium as recommended by the very thoughtful planning commission. Thank you.
Nico Leo, 419 St. Joseph Street. It seems to me that the planning commission has lost sight of our community's identity and values. This is evident in item number 60 on tonight's agenda, which discusses a topic that many of us took by, it took many of us by surprise. It's my understanding that you're considering imposing a moratorium on cap or caps on short-term rentals. My question is, why? We've been a resort community for well over a century. When my wife Holly and I bought our home on the hill in 2003, we converted once, what was once a men's boarding house into our primary residence. Before that, Holly's father owned a house on Lucy Street that served as a short-term rental, which we were able to use during the off-season. Surrounding our house on St. Joseph's Street, both at the time of our purchase and currently, are many rental homes. These properties have been excellent neighbors, and in the 20 years we've lived here, we've never had any issues with them. About a year ago, the planning commission proposed a moratorium on short-term rentals to the city council. Fortunately, this measure was dismissed, and instead, a task force was established to examine short-term rentals and establish basic guidelines and rules for owners and guests. Most people, including myself, supported the task force. While I didn't closely follow the process, the findings reported in the news media made sense to me. A few years ago, my family and I rented a short-term rental in Palm Springs and had to sign a good neighbor contract, agreeing to abide by local rules on noise and behavior. Violating these rules meant forfeiting our security deposit without any warnings or second chances. I assume Sagatuck's task force would propose something similar. While most of the work done so far is sensible, the discussion of caps or a moratorium doesn't align with our community's values. We are a resort community that relies heavily on tourists for our economy. We need a constant influx of tourists renting properties to sustain businesses such as boat rentals, restaurants, shops, and bars. Concerns about a surge in short-term rental applications due to impending restrictions are unfounded. According to our local MLS, residential property sales have actually decreased over the years. In 2019, there were 47 sales, followed by 60 in 2020, 42 in 2021, 38 in 2022, and only 27 in 2023. In the last four months, we've only had four sales in the, in the city limits, one of which is a former seasonal motel. Ryan is more than capable of handling potential new, of handling four potential new rental certificates. Implementing one would, the fire hose is closed, and implementing a moratorium would deprive full-time residency options to rent out their homes when needed, especially considering considering the recent 10% increase.
Go. I have to cut you off. If you would like to send that to council.
I basically was going to say that probably that's a 10% in the last three years.
Thank you, Nico. Feel free to send that on to council, though. Appreciate it.
Hello. Lisa Mize, Executive Director of the Sagatuck Douglas Convention and Visitors Bureau. At the CBB, our mission statement is to promote the region as a premier destination and advocate for sensible, sustainable development to enhance the community's quality of life and sense of place. The CBB Board of Directors would like to remind the city council that tourism is still our only and main industry. Tourism fills our hotels, motels, bed and breakfasts, and vacation rentals. Tourism fills our restaurants and bars. Tourism keeps our retail establishments in business. Tourism keeps our attractions busy, and tourism brings people to our wineries, cideries, and breweries. Without these visitors, our Without these visitors, our residents would not be able to enjoy the standard of living that we all love and appreciate. Please remember that without our guests, the area could suffer and cease to exist as we know it. Vacation rentals make up almost 45% of the total assessment dollars that the CBB uses to market and promote the area. By limiting short term rentals, you'll be limiting the largest sector of our lodging industry, which in turn would have a huge trickle down effect on all the area businesses. The CBB has been monitoring the short term rental legislation that House Representative Joey Andrews has introduced. If passed, this bill will have far reaching effects on all the short term rentals in the state of Michigan. This issue continues to be discussed at the various regional meetings that we attend, including the Pure Michigan Governors Conference, our Beach Towns Group, as well as the Michigan Association of CBBS. Obviously, we are in favor of regulating short term rentals. There should be the same regulations in place for all lodging. We want our guests to feel safe and all lodging should be held to the same high standards. Please keep in mind as you make decisions about short term rentals in the city of Sagatuck that your decisions have the capability of negatively impacting every sector of our businesses, their employees and their livelihoods, which in turn will hurt our local economy and ultimately our year round residents. We appreciate the work of the Short Term Rental Task Force, the Planning Commission and City Council members. Thank you for your thoughtful consideration of all sides of the short term rental issue.
Anyone else in the audience?
Diana Decker, 128 Elizabeth. I was born here. I went to the last Planning Commission meeting and I know on the agenda it said short term rentals, further discussion of residential cats. I was kind of really surprised that it was passed for the moratorium. I know that the fleece ordinance, you know, that's great. We talked about that, the short term rental task, the noise ordinance. I live up on the hill, so that's great. I agree with that, you know, eight to eight. Someone's mentioning, you know, 285 rentals. There's quite a few example, I'll use one condo association. You can rent twice a year. Okay, you can decide one week here, one month here, six months, one week here. Okay, that's a short term rental certificate. So that's not like every week, every week, every week. So that 285 is not like all the time. So it's not accurate on a lot of those rental certificates. I was kind of surprised on some of the comments that if someone has a rental certificate, if they're not using it, they should lose it. At the Planning Commission. Other comments. Why do we have all these zones? You know, there's R1, R2, C1, C2. That's the master plan. It's been like this for many years. Other communities, same thing. You have your C1, your C2, your C3, your C4 in some of the cities, South Haven, so on. In the city of South Haven, that rental transfer certificate is transferable. And your ordinance is, it is not. There's just so many things here that I'm concerned about on the comments. They said, well, what about the cost? What about the cost? Well, the fire department sent you a letter that they would have to hire a full time person for annually inspections. So I was just surprised that they didn't do, study it more, get the data instead of all the whole R1 zone. That's how anyone looked how big R1 zone is. My, thank you.
Anyone else in the audience?
Dick Waskin, 6576 Heron Ridge Road, also the owner and broker of RE/MAX Sagatuck Douglas. I attended all but one of the short term rental task force meetings and sought to participate as well as I could. I helped provide some of the information as far as sales here in town and how they're affected and how our where our prices are here in Sagatuck versus other communities. And I follow things right to the conclusion. I think there were many good suggestions that the task force made. And I see that you're acting on quite a few of those tonight and that's good. And I think one of the conclusions that the task force did say was that let's put these suggestions in place and see how things work out, see if that handles many of the problems that people are talking about, whether it be noise, whether it be trash. They did not reckon and there was no consensus. There was no consensus in the community as a whole that we institute caps. Or was there even mention of instituting moratorium? The city spent a lot of money on hiring a consulting firm to guide the task and help them come to the conclusions they came to. The people who were on the task force spend a lot of time and effort and research to come to the conclusions that they did. And I don't think it's, I don't think it's right. I don't think it's fair that now we should just sidestep those conclusions. Really have to take that into And as far as the suggestion of a moratorium, it will affect values. And why it will affect values is because the moratorium causes uncertainty. People don't know what the conclusion is going to be, six months from now, or if it gets extended, as the city's moratorium seemed to end up doing. Nobody's going to buy or invest into the town residential or even commercially. If they're not sure exactly what's going to happen with the moratorium is put into place, putting a huge question mark on what the future is going to be. And it will affect property values. I'm sorry, I have to disagree. If you compare our communities, because we're a residential community, our prices are up here. Other communities are down here. If we say we may not allow that in the future, all that portion of the market, the percentage of the market that would come here to invest will not, if there's a moratorium in place. They just won't. So your decision on this issue of moratorium will have grave effects. And I think that really needs to be taken into account because you'll be responsible for what happens after that as far as people's property values. It's people's most important investment they've made in their lives. It's their home. And we need to respect it. Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience?
Jay, 345 Grand Street. I am a member of the Planning Commission right now. I appreciate the several people in the audience who attended, especially our last Plan Commission meeting. I appreciate the several members of our City Council who attended our Plan Commission meeting. I want to say that we took deliberative action after much thought, after much consideration, after taking into consideration a lot of opinions. We did not do anything hasty. And if you were not involved, you know, the onus is kind of on some of you to to own up to that. I think we did really well with both police powers, the noise ordinance, the zoning. And there doesn't seem to be a lot of dispute about that. I want to raise a single issue. I live on the hill, corner of Grand and Main. There are seven properties adjacent to our, my corner house. Five of those are vacant a good chunk of the year. Some are vacant almost the entire year. I, there's, there's a, some signs around town that say, say neighborhoods need neighbors. I didn't move into a neighborhood for it to be predominantly empty. So I'm talking about the converse of what a lot of people are talking about noise and trash and how many cars are parked there and and all those kinds of things. I'm talking about the reverse. I invite any of you to walk with me, my dog, I walk my dog around 11:00 PM and look at the number of dark houses adjacent to Nico, for example. The houses are dark. Nobody is there, especially in the off season. It's, 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 there is no neighborhood. There is no, there's very few people who who give a sense of community. And I like the woman's comment about how it's hard to find people who are, who will volunteer for boards because there just aren't the people here. I don't think the sky is falling. I don't think that if you impose a moratorium, the sky will fall. I'm not going to call any one chicken little. But I don't think that that will occur. All we were asking for with the moratorium is while we explore the issue of caps, that you simply put a pause on new issuance of short term rentals. And I don't think that's unreasonable. And the fact that it's only in the R1s, so where there's a lot of short term rentals elsewhere in this community, those will be not affected. So with that, I appreciate your deliberation and thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Anyone else in the audience?
As a matter of fact, I've read all these papers. First, I tried to print them off and it's not real easy either. And then put it back together so you could read this. It took about a month to do that. But it's sitting here. Yes. Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm so old. Yeah. Thanks Sanford, 160 Tacken. Thank you. I'm sorry. I usually don't have the mic there either, do I? Sorry. I came to say congratulations and all the work you've done. I've enjoyed reading it and following it and feeling really, really good. And when it came down to the caps and moratorium, I don't have a problem with that. It's for six months and it gives you, Planning Commission, time to figure out what you really want to do. I don't think people can go ahead and rush you and do one way or the other until you give yourself the time to do that. The one thing I would like to see you do is have a public meeting outside of a board meeting or any kind of a meeting, that you could tell the public about this information because it's difficult to dig it all out. Then you dig it out and you lose it. So, but it's important that the public and the voters know exactly what you want. So they know how to react even. I've heard people say the moratorium will kill this and do that. It's not forever. It's just for six months. And I would like to have Mr. Cummings do the meeting. He's the one who understands it all the most, I think. But council wouldn't even need to be there. We just need somebody who can walk us through it and tell us what it means. And it is fundamental. I mean, you have to admit we're all on a fundamental level compared to where you all are. So that's what I had to say. And I thank you.
Anyone else in the audience?
Laura Durham, 747 Water Street, Sagatuck. So a couple of thoughts from listening to everyone. I'm not even clear how the City Council can make a decision without having a study done. What will this do to the economics of this community? And until you know that, how could you make that decision? I don't know. I'm wondering how you could. I've heard of lost jobs. I've heard of history changing. As individual people, how do you know without doing that? What kind of an effect it will have? I look at people on this council. I look at people on planning. Many of them have done short term rentals, whether the properties were here in Holland. But yeah, so opposed to it now, when you're not doing that. And when someone's at a moratorium for six months, won't do anything, it's just my personal opinion, it'll do a lot. It's going to create uncertainty. So until you know what will it do to our community, I'm asking that you go and get a study done and find out what will it do before you make those decisions. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Laura.
Good afternoon, everyone. Bobby Gant, 341 Main Street. I too am a member of the Planning Commission. And thank you, Mark. I won't be redundant to Mark's remarks. I share his opinions and views. But I wanted to thank you, first of all, for the willingness to consider this and consider a brief moratorium and brief in the scheme of things, six months on the issuance of new short term rental permits or licenses. While regulations are not necessarily a subject to any of us are usually happy to consider, to protect the common good, they are usually necessary to some degree. And one of the things that no one has mentioned yet is Sagatuck is beginning to experience a material population decline due fundamentally to aging. Much we can do about that. So I am pleased that the city is considering how that strategically affects the quality of life that Sagatuck represents and which draws so many to this environment and creates the beauty of life here that we are all blessed to experience. Sagatuck is a deeply valuable asset. And I'm pleased you are considering a variety of ways of how to protect it and to grow it in value, including understanding the effect of the magnitude of short term rentals on individual neighborhoods and their quality of life. And at 341 Main Street, which is my home, I am surrounded by short term rentals. Thank you.
Abby. Anyone else in the audience?
Good afternoon. My name is Joe Clark, 419 Francis Street, in town. Another Planning Commissioner up before you. I also served on the Short Term Rental Task Force. And first and foremost, I want to thank all of the work you provide to help guide our city. It's important. I'm very passionate about this town. Third generation Clarks. We've had property on the hill now for the summer market hundred years. And you know, I'm up here to encourage council as a president, not as a planning commissioner, but I'm here to encourage the council to take very careful consideration for the recommendations that have been put forth in front of you. I personally believe we need to find balance. I think it's been said a couple of times here. I know of no one who's saying no short term rents, but I am hearing more and more, especially in my my neighborhood, concerns around the fact that there's just too many, dismantling the sense of community and driving a sense of commercialism that I think we need to be very careful. It's a slippery slope. You know, we open up the door and, you know, we have rentals that start out as, you know, owners who want to share their their home or share an accessory dwelling unit. And, you know, then it turns into, this is investment property, businesses, right? They're effectively running in the residential areas. And and certainly there's some good that can come out of that, but when we start to see some of the numbers grow, especially around, you know, some of the residential neighborhoods, it's, it's not in line with the tri-community plan, which says there should be residential units, residential zones set up for our community to thrive. And it's also not reasonable to expect residents who have invested in those areas, like the district that's defined as a single family resident, put up with some of the, you know, the density of the short term rentals that we're currently seeing. I walked around my block and this morning, 50%, 50% rentals. Is that a reasonable number? I don't think so. But I do, but maybe others will think it isn't. But regardless, I think it's important, tap the brakes. Not an unreasonable request to give Planning Commission six months. You know, to stop, put the moratorium in place. Adopt the resolution that's in front of you for the Police Orders Act, that because are all reasonable suggestions that have come up, you know, from the groundswell of input from the community and the business owners alike. So again, thank you for your time today and So again, thank you for your time today and, um, she will want your deliberations.
Charles Pegg is Keith Jarrett, uh, 560 Main Street. Got a few comments I want to go over, but kind of believe that, uh, as a small community, you're out of balance as a livable community. Um, I'm going to hop around here. In the last 24 years, the population of Sagatuck, I got the stat up since has dropped from 1,065, 751. Numbers could be a little off. Um, I believe this is an unsustainable path, uh, to a healthy community for those of us who live here. Granted, there's a lot of businesses, but I live here year on. We don't have enough residents to support sustained council's elected positions, committees and the volunteer positions that is, are all over the board here, all over the community. Logan and Russ, you guys grew up here. There were a million kids here, or not a million, there were a lot of kids here, you know, back in the day. Back in your day, when you went to school here, there were kids all over the hill. You know, so, you know, and that, that's different now. I mean, you guys moved back into town basically, you know, near or in the houses you grew up in. And there's probably no kids, um, unless you're planning it. No, that's not my point. But, um, you know, it, it's different now than it is then. No one's moving in here and great, there's investments all around. You can buy a house for a million bucks, rent it out, make 80 or 50 to 80 or a hundred grand a year. But I don't think that's healthy for the community at all. I mean, someone who, yeah, I'm, when I retire, I'll move here. I'll buy a house when I retire, I'll move here in two years. If you're making 50, 80, a hundred grand a year on a rental house, you're not moving here in two years after you retire. That's too much change. I believe a cap is very important and a moratorium even more. There's nobody that lives in my neighborhood. I think there's 13 or 14, maybe 18 piece parcels that touch Main Street. There's 13 residents. The youngest is 55 years old and there's like three or four there. Well, I'm 67, so there's probably like a dozen that are my age at all. And so we, we are an aging community. I would just, I'm in favor of getting more people to live here. I don't think on the path we're, we're on, um, we're going to be a viable community for people to live. I mean, I wouldn't probably, who knows? But I think that, um, I agree with this, be a cap in the moratorium. Healthy in the long run. Thank you.
Thanks, Keith. Go ahead.
My name is Tyler Kane. I live at 307 Singapore Port. Uh, I recently moved, um, to the area, invested in this area. I could have chosen anywhere in the country. Um, I'm from Holland, Michigan. I lived in Chicago for 14 years. I had a summer home here for four years. Um, and I love this area and I enjoy the city as is and I love the water. And when I started hearing about this, um, I was completely shocked that there was no economic impact study that was done on this whatsoever. Um, I come from a finance background and when we do private placement deals, you know, you do your due diligence and it appears to me that the committee hasn't done any due diligence whatsoever on the economic impact because every business that's out here in the city right now is completely impacted by, um, tourists which come in and they rent short-term rentals. And we don't have, I mean, you guys have already put in place rules for no more hotels and, um, that sort of situation. So where are these people coming from? I know I have business owners that are in the city that have boutiques. A couple of my friends have restaurants. They are literally only staying open for the winter, just to keep their employees employed for the summer, like we get our tourists back. Um, I don't agree with a lot of the people that say we get our city back, during the winter, because I feel like the city is left as to like what a lot of people do buy into this community for. I, I also frequent the restaurants often during the winter. Um, I support the boutiques as well. I don't agree with a lot of the residents that have been here forever. Um, they don't support those restaurants and they don't support the local shops. You know, they're going to South Bay and they're going to Holland to get their stuff. They're not, they're not staying here in the community. Um, so I don't agree with that whatsoever. Also, yes, it's not the way that it was, but guess what? There is no, there isn't a lumberyard. There isn't, we're not building marinas anymore. Um, they're already built. It's already been done. So you have carpenters, you have the restaurant owners, although they're being supported by, um, the renters upcoming in short-term as well as still within the community. But we can't support, the community itself can't support what we have here by itself. We need outsiders to come here. So, um, I just would recommend to the committee, um, you really do need to get, uh, economic impact study done. I mean, if Formula One did it with the Las Vegas Grand Prix, they added 10,000 jobs. They added $360 million in salaries and they brought in 1.2 billion dollars, um, to that city for the Grand Prix. So, I mean, if you can come up with numbers for them, for Las Vegas to be okay with a little disturbance, I believe, you know, it would be money to be all spent when you get more of the community on board to actually see those numbers in front of you instead of all this back and forth. Well, I've lived here forever. I'm new here. Well, you know what? It is what it is now, but I think everybody would get more on board if we could actually see numbers, see what's going to happen. So I'm out of time, but I appreciate it.
Anyone else in the audience? Are we allowed to do any comments?
No.
I know. Sorry about that.
Absolutely not. Is there, is there?
There is, there is public comment at the end.
Yes. This is a long meeting, but there is a second comment section at the end of this meeting.
Uh, Bill has 70 Mark Park Street, Sagatuck. I have just a single focus. I live in one of those areas that's being proposed for the moratorium. And the only reason I knew about it is I happened to repack it. And I've had a lot of the residents property owners not there in Chicago, who live several places else. I have no problem with moratorium either way, but I think before it's imposed, the property owners should know what it means to them. There's a house, the building down the street from me, I don't know the owners. It's for sale right now at $800,000 because it's a rental. If that moratorium goes in, by the way, for six months, those people will not be able to sell the house the way it is. So let people know why the moratorium is happening, what it means to them. And I think you owe that to the property owners in those areas where a moratorium may be proposed.
Thanks, Bill. Anyone else in the room? Hey, going once, anyone going twice? We will go to everyone online if no one else in the room would like to speak. Good? Okay. Uh, Jamie, if you want to go with, uh, any particular order or would you like me to pick? Yeah, that sounds good. All right, let's start with Elizabeth Estes in the top left-hand corner. I see your hand raised. Go ahead, Elizabeth.
Thank you. Can you guys hear me? Okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. My name is Elizabeth Estes. I own several commercial properties in the area and live in the township at 6282 Chipewa Avenue. I followed and, uh, the task force and read the report, uh, with interest and applaud the efforts of those who volunteered their time. What's curious to me is that the majority of the people surveyed didn't support caps, let alone a moratorium. But what they came back with, the recommendations were awesome. Create a good neighbor guide, spruce up the ordinances, hire a dedicated compliance officer, and then the other processes. In conversations over the last few days, I've heard random numbers thrown about regarding this entire issue and, and the ambiguity and the emotional rhetoric are equal in their frustrating qualities. First, when I hear people bemoan that our full-time residents or voters are 840 or 850, or Keith said 740, uh, you know, I was wondering before if that meant that all the rest are short-term rentals, but not according to the task force. The 840 doesn't take into account that many of our residents are retirees who have chosen a different state to claim as full-time and be voters there due to the tax benefits that that affords. They don't rent their homes, but they're still, but they're, they aren't full-time residents either. So we need the full story and all of this rhetoric. Beyond the report or any noise or trash issues, when I hear from several council members that we need to make Sagatuck a more neighborhood community, I'm wondering what the planning commission or council are going to consider besides moratoriums. So if you think about this issue on a continuum, you're talking about the far left, let's just shut them down for a while. Have there been any discussion about long-term tax incentives for people who might come into the community for long-term? Has there been discussion of, uh, small boutique hotels? Because the commission act or the report actually said no development. Has the council determined if they're going to help fund more shoulder month efforts at the CVB so we can extend the season to make up for the loss of tourist dollars during the summer? What's the rest of the thinking and planning and what are the goals for that next six months? So we're going to have a six-month moratorium for what? I haven't heard them. Um, and it's mind-boggling that our first step is to limit tourists in a town with no other revenue. You can't compare us to Charlevoix. They have other industries. And which leads me to the final question, which has just been brought up, but where's the economic impact study? The Sagatuck property taxes have gone up 5% a year for the last two years. If a percentage of the short-term rentals and those non-helm studs are gone away, has anyone figured out the financial impact to the city and the remaining taxpayers? And then what could be the loss of tourism dollars? We need an economic impact study and it seems like a small investment to make to make sure that the next step is the right step and that we have all of the information and we can debate over the details, not participate in this ridiculous, high emotional, high stakes game. Um, I so totally appreciate the effort of the task force and the boards. Before acting, I would just please, um, ask you to consider that a moratorium or a cap is a short-term view that will cause long-term regrets, if not done with specific goals in mind. Please remove the ambiguity, get the rest of the data we need to make a thoughtful, less emotional decision. And please finish the job by getting the complete economic study done. I do thank you and, and Mark and all of the planning commission board members and all of the task force for all of the time and effort that you put and I'm appreciative for all of that. Thank you for the time today.
Thanks, Elizabeth. All right, let's go with Joe. I don't know how to pronounce your last name. Paul. Joe, if you want to unmute yourself.
Yeah, hello?
Hi, Joe.
Hi, sorry about that. Uh, Joe Cuollo, 764 Mason Street. So I, I purchased my property in the city because I like the feel of a tourist town. I like the amenities that a town that receives a large influx of people can provide. I like meeting and conversing with the people who visit Sagatuck from all over the country. That's, you know, I've been coming to Sagatuck for probably 15 years and I liked it enough to buy here and, um, I'd hate to lose that feel. Uh, I won't, uh, I was going to go into the, the economic impact study, but we have a couple of people who've already touched on that. But I, uh, so I won't go down that whole road again. However, I do want to concur that that's, that's just common practice. Certainly with something of this magnitude, that, that we need to know how that's going to be impacted. Cause, uh, I just think you should, should do it. Also, as a small business owner, I understand the impacts even small changes can have. I own a small business and I'm concerned about how the, uh, this decision will impact the small businesses in town. I was just, uh, walking around town just this last couple of days and I see the, the ones who are trying to hang in there during the off-season and the ones that shut down for the off-season. And I can only imagine what happens when those, uh, businesses will have even less because now you, you don't have the, the short-term rentals, uh, that currently exist. Or even if they were, even if they were cut by 25%, that's still going to be a significant impact on a town that's, uh, reliant on, uh, those folks, even in the off-season who still come out and still spend, spend weekends there. So I would encourage the, uh, the city to, to rethink, uh, their decision with the moratoriums and, and, and reducing the amount of short-term rentals. That's all. Thank you.
All right, Joe. Thank you.
Just a quick comment to the clerk. If you, uh, lower, uh, the hands, the next one up is next in line. So it'll, it, it'll order it for you. So if you lower that hand or the next hand, then the next person that has it.
There was one we missed though. Where did that one go? It was before Holly Leo. It was Tony. Okay, let's just go with Tony for now and then we'll head our.
Thank you so much.
Yes, please.
Hi, everyone. Um, Tony Francore, 651 Holland Street. My husband, Paul, and I purchased our home two years ago. Um, we are on the hill. Um, we purchased the home so we could save a piece of Sagatuck history. Um, and we love it and we love Sagatuck and we love being there and we love everything about it. My husband is from Alpena. My parents, my, um, in-laws live in Alpena. We have family in Detroit and in Chicago and we love to all congregate to Sagatuck and rent houses in our neighborhood so everyone has a place to stay. It's awesome and we like going to the restaurants and everything else. I'm also a, um, a real estate broker. And I know that this will impact and I know that, you know, other people have an idea on the other side that it won't impact the value. It will, absolutely. I do agree there needs to be an economic impact study. How is this going to affect all of the businesses in town? Like there are so many amazing businesses there, so many artists that rely on these tourists coming into town and purchasing their artwork and, and going to their restaurants. And it is definitely going to impact them. We have vacation rentals on both sides of us. And, you know, we meet new people every single week that were there during the summer. And, um, we talk to them and we talk to them about where they're from and how they, you know, why they're there and usually there are never any issues. I also live in Palm Springs and I have vacation rentals in my neighborhood there too. And there, we have the ability to call, uh, a task force and get someone in there immediately. If someone is too loud, there are all kinds of regulations you can put in place without putting a moratorium and without putting a cap on the vacation rentals. That's all I have to say. Thank you so much. Love Sagatuck.
Thanks, Tony.
Thank you. Next up, Holly Leo.
Hi there, Holly Leo, 419 St. Joseph's Street. I want to talk to you about feelings. Yep, feelings. There's a group of folks with good numbers on the planning commission and on this council that feel that they would like more families and less tourists as neighbors. And they aim to do something about that now, right now. Even though the short-term rental task force did not recommend caps or a moratorium. And by the way, that's not a feeling, that's a fact. But strong feelings could be turned into a moratorium while a few folks decide winners and losers, who's going to get capped? Now, I have owned my house here for 20 years. I love my neighborhood. I love my community. Those were my feelings there. And now, of course, my house is for sale. But I don't see the reason to defund the value of my house nor the value of your house so Sagatuck can be a suburb of Holland? I mean, we're not a bedroom community, nor have we ever been one. Our economy does not run on locals. It runs on tourists. Um, so I do get it that there are folks that are craving something more ideal. They want more locals to live here. I just don't think that all the homeowners in the city should materially and financially subsidize those feelings. And that's going to be a big problem. But, uh, also I wish you all well. And having, uh, been in your chair, I appreciate how difficult of an issue this is to tackle. That's it.
Holly, thank you.
Thanks, Holly.
Thanks, Holly.
Um, on to Brad. Val?
Yep. Uh, so I've, uh, been showing up to these meetings and, uh, the, uh, short-term task force rental meetings.
Can you please state your name and where you're from, Brad?
Yes, uh, Brad Vah, 260 Brook Street, uh, and I live over in Hamilton. Uh, but, uh, as I said, I've been coming to these meetings for a while. Um, and I want to echo the sentiments, uh, that, that others have been addressing here about feelings, about data, about, you know, whatever it may be. Uh, back, uh, about a year ago, when, when we went through this the first time, uh, one of the things that I very much, uh, was adamant about is that I'd love to see this, uh, task force bring out a bunch of data, uh, to actually do some data analysis and understand what this community was, what this community is and where this community is going. Uh, recently, uh, the gentleman at, uh, 560 Main Street, uh, quoted numbers about the US census. But those numbers are a little bit misleading because according to the 2020 US Census, Census Act, census, uh, the population of Sagatuck is 865. the population of Sagatuck is eight sixty-five. And that is higher than or equal to the ninety out of the last hundred sixty years in, in Sagatuck. So there's only a seventy-year period in eighteen seventy, eighteen, eighteen eighty, nineteen twenty and nineteen ninety where the population is higher. Somebody else mentioned that this is a older community, that people are aging out of the community. They are either snowbirds moving to Florida, like my very next-door neighbors in Sagatuck here, or they're passing away and their families are taking on the property. We look at the sales numbers, we look at the tax revenues, if we look at the transference of properties, properties are not moving in the volume that the planning council seems, planning committee rather, seems to be indicating that they are moving. Additionally, you know, I believe the, the woman at five fifty Spear had mentioned that something along the lines of not finding people to move into town to join the, the committee. But in the very next breath, mentioned that her son and family had just moved to town. So there's a lot of mixed kind of analogies here in the way that people are presenting information, the way that people are talking about things. Either people are moving to the city or people aren't moving to the city. You can't say people aren't moving to the city and then immediately say that somebody is. Same thing with somebody who had mentioned that this is too expensive and they can't purchase property here. But then mentions in the very next breath that all of their other family members, their siblings, their cousins, their sisters also have property here or are concerned about losing their front yards. So what is it? You can't buy here or you can buy here. Ultimately, the feelings have to get out of these conversations and we have to talk about data. We have to talk about the population, we have to talk about the tax revenue. We have to talk about the impact on the businesses, on the tourism industry, on the schools, everything like that. And not these feelings of, oh, I have too many empty houses next to me, or oh, there's nobody to have a bridge club with. Thanks Brad.
Brad, thank you so much. Next up, Severn.
Hi, so I'm here to make three different points about short-term rental.
You have to state, state your name and where you live.
Severn Nowiki and I live on eight four one Holland Street. And I do own a boutique on Water Street, four oh three Water Street. And I'm here to speak as a business owner. The three points I would like to make is that not allowing short-term rentals is not fixing the issue of affordability in the, in the community. I feel like there was lots of effort and money spent on trying to fix the issue of short-term rentals. But not, no effort or money was spent on actually fixing the issue of affordable housing. I think we hired somebody from outside to write a report about the situation we have with the short-term rentals. What if we would hire somebody to actually write, spend some time and study an issue of, of, of housing? And maybe actually write, spend some time and write for grants, available grants from, from the government that will be able to use, will be able to use for, for affordable housing. I don't, I don't see anything being done there. The second point I would like to make as a business owner is that over ninety-nine percent of my customers are not local. I wish most, more people local would be shopping at the store, but they are not. Most of you, if not all of you, have never been to my store and I've been here over three years. Some on Water Street, I'm very easy to be found. But yet I haven't seen you. So the only way I can survive is to have people from outside of town to be able to visit me. And in order for them to be here, they have to be able to stay somewhere. And there's only few hotels, very few Airbnbs. We are talking about maybe a hundred total people staying in town in those places without Airbnbs. So that will be, that will be a suicide for my store. And the third point I'm trying to make is that just because you see a dark house in your neighborhood, that doesn't mean that it's a, that it's an Airbnb short-term rental property. I live on Holland and two of the homes next to me are empty right now. And those are second homes. Those people either live somewhere else, work somewhere else and come here during the summer and play, spend nice time, or they go, they live here full-time, but they go for winter to Florida or P V or other places. So just because a house is dark, doesn't mean there is a short-term rental property. There's lots of second homes here and those are three, three, I'm sorry, three of my points. Thank you, thank you guys.
Thank you very much.
Thank you Severn.
Next up, Ethan.
Hello, Ethan Barty, five eighty-four Lake Street. Also owner of the Bird Center Resort and managed quaint cottages. Yeah, thanks for all the work that you guys have done. I know this isn't easy, as everyone said. I do wanna echo.
Let's pause that and go eat.
Yep, oh, can, can you hear me?
You can continue Ethan, go ahead.
Sorry, sorry. Yeah, I do wanna echo that, you know, Sagatuck is a unique community. We can't compare it to Charlevoix. We are a tourist town. Bird Center Resort goes way back. Actually, one of the cottages there was an old chicken coop that was moved there and, and became a cottage. It used to be all part of Old Pike, Old Pike Inn. We found a newspaper in there from eighteen ninety-seven, a lot of history there. People have been coming from Chicago and all over for a hundred years, before Airbnb, before B R B O. You know, Sagatuck pretty much was, you know, you could say ahead of its time by a hundred years in, in doing this because there weren't the hotels, there aren't the hotels here. A lot of livelihoods, you know, rely on, on the, on the, the, not only the, you know, short-term rentals, the real estate and so forth. So you know, what we have to, the other thing I wanna talk about is, you know, we have to be careful with statistics and numbers and, and it's all good, but I can take any statistic and make it to form my case. And, excuse me?
Oh, Ethan.
Okay, sorry about that. I, I don't know what's going on there, but, you know, I just wanna, you know, just, you know, I, I wanna make sure that the council just, you know, looks, looks at, you know, the reality. I was in a local restaurant this weekend, President's Day. I was happy to see that the place was full. People eating breakfast, not enough breakfast places, I don't think, but it was full. Talked to several people there. They're all staying at short-term rentals. I was the only local in there. If it wasn't for short-term rentals, the place would have been empty. You know, we, to talk just real brief about real estate values, you know, I think we need to look at facts. The fact is that if you do this moratorium, property values will immediately go down. We, we have a couple of houses on contract right now. If this goes into place, it'll go away. The, the contract will be canceled. You know, thirty percent, you know, less than property values. I mean, this is a pretty serious thing and you really need to think about it long and hard of what you're gonna do to people's livelihoods and their pocketbooks. And the last thing I just wanna leave you with is a question that you're gonna do a moratorium for short-term rentals, you know, are you gonna consider a moratorium and do thirty percent less tax revenue? For the, thank you.
All right, Ethan, thank you so much. Next up, Philip.
Hello. My name is actually Joseph Park. I am Philip's husband, but we're logged into our device as Philip. I am from Art Coast Properties and my husband and I live at ninety-six East Twentieth Street in Holland. Currently, while we are patiently searching for a home in Sagatuck for the past three years, looking for the right fit. And I wanted to speak today and echo, first of all, what Lisa Mize had said earlier about the moratorium and everything involved. I think that she said it really beautifully. And on top of that too, I would say a special thanks to everybody whose consideration has gone into this issue. This is the first time I've ever spoken up, but I have really watched this issue closely. So a lot of folks on this call have, you know, mentioned that they've been living in the community for a hundred years or more, maybe their families. My husband and I have only been living here for, for four years and we've been coming here for ten. About ten years ago, we started coming as vacation renters from Chicago. We fell in love with the area and we decided to start our business here. And since then, we have really enjoyed the entire community of Sagatuck and it matters a lot to us. And I'm just here today to add, for the owners that we represent, we are a property management company in the area. And much has been said during this call about the empty houses on the roads and just about how you feel like there's not this sense of community from the people because of the vacation rentals. And I just wanted to add that the people who own the vacation rentals are members of this community. They might not be able to join the meeting today, but they do love their homes. We know each of them on a very personal level. And they, as far as the ones who are listed with us, are not huge corporations that are coming in to destroy the town. They might not send their kids to school in Sagatuck School District, but they are coming here with their kids and families, spending plenty of time in the neighborhood, adding a lot to the community and they bought their home here primarily because they love it here. And they're also offering it as a vacation rental because that's what this town is. And that's all that I wanted to say. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks Joe.
All right, next up, Mark Klingle.
Did they unmute?
Yep, you're good. Go ahead, Mark.
A little over a year ago, we started here at the same place, talking about moratoriums.
Mark, if you could go ahead and give us your name and where you live.
Okay, Mark Klingle, seven forty-seven Water Street. We started here about a year ago talking about moratoriums. Then a short-term task force, short-term rental task force was formed. They spent a lot of time coming up with plan or basically the ordinances that are in front of you to, to pass. Yet, before we can get those ordinances passed, we're back here talking about moratoriums again. The, the short-term task force was hoping to get this implemented before they, we started anything else. They voted against caps by seven to two margin. The survey on the community was against caps by sixty percent margin. So the before we get there, let's, let's implement the ordinances that you have in front of you. Before we start over trying to re-engineer when we don't see any results of what you, what the task force has done. We've heard a lot of emotional input from all over on numbers. Yet, it was very difficult to get an actual number of short-term rentals in the community. And we still have not really resolved that. Yet, we, we talk about there's not enough volunteers in the community. Yet, the last seven applications I put into the city for volunteering for the committee, I got rejected for every one. So to, to, to pick on all of these things, let's, let's sort out the facts first and let's give the short-term rental task force work. Take a fact and see where we're at, rather than try to change everything before we've, you know, basically let the medicine take effect. Thank you.
All right, Mark, thank you. Steve Mans.
Hello, and first I wanna thank everyone today.
State your name and where you live first.
Sure, sorry Lauren. Steve Mans, five, six, eight Wyerick Drive, Sagatuck, Michigan. And I also was part of the short-term rental task force and I chaired the planning commission for the city of Sagatuck. And I thank all of you who are there today to, who are gonna take, take on some of the ordinances that we have recommended regarding changes to the short-term rental, whether it be the zoning as well as the noise. And then also for putting on at least this workshop, the discussion on the moratorium. I also wanna thank Mark and Bobby and Joe who spoke earlier, who are in the room, who are part of the planning commission, because I could tell you that all of us have thought very long and hard about what's going into the ordinances that are in front of you as well as the idea of the moratorium. The one thing that keeps coming up is people talk about taking away short-term rental. And again, I think everybody who's on council is very much aware that no one is talking about taking any short-term rentals that are in existence today away. They would all be continuing to operate. What we were saying is that we would look at potentially limiting any new licenses to be established. Now, a year ago, when the planning commission made a recommendation to council at the time that we were forming the task force, this moratorium was discussed and that's been mentioned by many people here today. I think it was very prudent of council at that time, maybe to not put it on the agenda and to move forward with the moratorium because we didn't have a lot of conclusions as to where the task force would end up. The task force was, completed all of its work. They made recommendations, many of which we have acted upon as the planning commission by sending forth recommendations that are on your agenda today through, with, through these ordinance changes. The one thing the task force did not comment on, but they did ask the planning commission to consider further, was the number, was one of the topics of how do you keep a neighborhood, a neighborhood. And the planning commission said, or the task force said that they could not evaluate that or how best to do it. But they did encourage the planning commission to continue to look at it. A year ago, we had about two hundred and forty-seven outstanding short-term rentals. Over, over the last year, we gained about ten percent, so we're now someplace between two seventy-five and two eighty-five. Not all of them in residential districts, but we did see about a ten percent increase. That was due to the fact that we didn't know where we'd end up. Today, we do have a very strong feeling the planning commission is gonna look further at should we have any type of limits or caps put on residential neighborhoods and the number of short-term rentals that can exist. So given that, I felt that it was probably prudent and rest of the planning commission did with the majority of six to one vote to recommend that we consider a moratorium so that we don't increase the numbers any higher while we try to determine if the number that we have today is sufficient and whether it's above what we need, at what we need, or below what we need. And then once we come out of it and hopefully within six months, we must be much more set to kind of look at it and determine where we move on from there. But the economic impact should be minimal because it will not change the exact number that we have today. I'm out of my time and I wish I was there personally, but thank you very much.
Thank you, Steve. Appreciate it. Bob Hartman, up next.
Yeah, hi Bob Hartman. I live in Sagatuck and also the Chicago suburbs. And I just wanted to bring a unique perspective. I've rented my cottage in the past and have reinvested in the community. It's allowed me to reinvest in the home with contractors in the community because of the short-term rentals. I also use the property, you know, myself quite frequently. I just don't like the idea that I've been able to rent it in the past and now you could take that away from me. I'm also a local business owner where I would say that eighty-five to ninety percent of my customers are tourists. So, yeah, I have some grave concerns if you're gonna move forward with this. That's all.
All right, Bob, thank you. Jamie, do you see anyone else? All right, Jay. That's a hand raise, that's a hand raise. Jamie, if you unmute yourself, you certainly can speak and we'll wait until you do so. We'll give it just a, just a beat here. Hi Jane, go ahead. If you could unmute yourself.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Excellent, excellent Jane, thank you. If you could state your name and where you live.
Jane Underwood, one thirty Perryman Street, Sagatuck. I would just like to say, probably the oldest person online and I know in the room. Russ, I'm older than you. I've heard this conversation that Sagatuck's dying if we don't do this or we don't do that. Ross, are you laughing?
I did.
Okay, good. We'll, we'll talk later about that too. You know what? I don't wanna live in a dead community. We have too many empty homes nine months of the year. And the consequences of that or the results are fewer children in the schools. Remember, I'm a retired teacher, so schools are very important to me. And as several people have pointed out, fewer people to join organizations that help our community. Whether it be Friends of the Library or Christian Neighbors or Boards for the SCA, Volunteers at OXPO. I could go on for quite a while. And talking about the property of homes, this bothers me. I'm not concerned about the value of my home. This is where I live. I'm not concerned about the value of my home. This is where I live. If you're concerned about the value of your home going down, maybe you need to decamp and go someplace else. That might sound kind of harsh, but that's kind of my feelings on the topic. Now, population, we know it's gone down. And talking about, as Steve just said, two hundred and eighty-five short-term rentals, you know what? I suspect there are a lot more than we actually know about. I think a moratorium, just everybody take a deep breath, and let's see where we're going with this. I have to admit, most of the shops in town have nothing that I want. I can remember when the shops. Well, laugh all you want, folks. Laugh all you want. But that's the truth. They are only for the tourists for the most part. I'm going to leave it at that. I think I've created a little merriment on the board and maybe in the audience. But I've been around here a long time, and I hope to see Sagatuck thrive with more people living here. Thanks.
All right, Jane, thank you so much. Is there anyone else online with their hand raised? I see CJ. Uh, go ahead, CJ. Take your time. You can just unmute yourself.
There you go. Can you hear me now?
Thank you, CJ. Yes.
Okay, so I'm also, I think I'm the last planning commissioner to speak, and I was the one no vote.
CJ, I'm sorry, could you state your?
Oh, CJ Badrack, Six Ten Lake, Sagatuck, Michigan, home of the best group of bars, restaurants, and stores on the West Coast. Um, I'm also on the planning commission. I was the one no vote. This uh, moratorium was not even in our packet. It was brought up during the meeting and pushed through. I felt like it was way too fast to go through. Um, I think the economic studies and the emotions and a lot of the things that have been stated are very much on point. I'm at work, so I'm going to be short. Um, the only other thing is the list of police ordinances. I, I would advise you to take a look at those one by one and not just blanket pass them as a whole. The thing should have been on the agenda and discussed and been out to the public before we even voted on it. So that's my, that's all I have to say. I gotta get back to work.
Okay, thank you, CJ. Appreciate it. Um, anyone else online with their hand raised?
Can I ask a point of order?
Uh, no, we can't have a second comment, but there is a chance at the end that you could um, have another opportunity to comment. Um, I do have an iPhone up in the left-hand corner, but we can't see. Um, I'm gonna go with the one in the upper left-hand corner with the hand raised, but we just can't see your name. Felicia. I think that's Felicia. Oh, I was, I was looking for. Okay. So in the meantime, do we want to go with um, the woman with the hand raised? Yes, okay. Does anyone? Go ahead, you can, Felicia, if you would like to speak? Just go ahead and unmute yourself. You need to unmute on your end?
There, I thought I was unmuted and I wasn't. Okay. My name is Felicia Fairchild. I live at six oh six Butler Street in Sagatuck. And I've been here for close to forty years. And I started the Convention and Visitors Bureau back in nineteen ninety, and I served at the, as the executive director till two thousand sixteen. Um, I was very interested in Lisa Mize's comment where she said that forty-five percent of the revenue of the Convention and Visitors Bureau these days is due to vacation rentals. When I was running the bureau, um, are we, they were approximately, and that was in the earlier years, ten percent of our revenue. So you can see how much vacation rentals have grown. Now, I have to say that I'm a little bit conflicted on which side I, I stand on, on this issue. I can see both sides very clearly. And I under, I understand the needs on both sides, too. It's important that I, and we all realize we have to meet some sort of common ground, and I think that might start with the recommendations that have been made for an economic impact study. And our bureau did con, uh, conduct an economic impact study of tourism, and the city council participated with us on that, and that was fairly recent. I think that would be around two thousand sixteen. And the individual company, or the company uh, led by the individual who we worked with did a very good job on it. So uh, if you're interested in contacting him, he would be an ideal person to help you do the economic impact study because that's what he does. He's a professor at Virginia Tech, and he's one of the top eleven marketing professionals in the world. So if you're interested, I'll pass that on to you.
Thank you, Felicia.
Great, thank you. Um, we do have one more hand raised if we can figure out who that might be. If you notice, um, feel free to unmute yourself. If you know who you are, right, exactly. Um, if not, we might have to move on at this time.
Okay, all right. So um, at this point, uh, we are closing the public comment section uh, for agenda items. So we will move on to item six A, uh, which is the request for proposal Oval Beach concession stand. It is page seventy-four in your. Hi, Scott.
Hi, good evening, council. Um, what an interesting meeting. I chose to add my two little agenda items, too. So uh, this should uh, hopefully we'll just fly right through these. I wouldn't worry about them. Public Works wants a couple things, so.
You're, you're actually being very strategic, Scott.
Yeah, we'll, we'll bore you. No, we'll see what your stamina is in those seats for tonight. But uh, yeah, so thi- this is really a concept that's nothing new to the city. When I first started uh, working, uh, working here back in two thousand.
If we could, it's hard to hear a lot of times, so if we could all just uh, stay quiet while Scott is speaking, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, this is a concept. Um, what we're talking about is potentially leasing out the concession stand, and, and first step would be um, drafting up a, a proper RFP, putting it out and, and collecting uh, just seeing what kind of interest there might be for this. So uh, and then also to introducing the idea to council tonight just to see if there is an appetite for this sort of thing, or if it's gonna, if I want to be stopped right in my tracks, that's fair enough, too. Um, but if there is uh, an appetite for it, then I guess the next step would be um, you know, I could, I could work with the attorneys and, and make, potentially draft up a lease agreement. In that agreement, there would be a lot of details ironed out, too. So um, but this is not, nothing new to the city. When I first started working here in two thousand and seven, um, when I worked on the seasonal staff, we did lease out the concession stand. Uh, we did that for quite a few years, and then kind of the, the very brief evolution of it is that we had a very long-term uh, you know, about ten-year uh, Oval Beach manager, and the beach manager really had an appetite for wanting to take on the concession stand, and because we, you know, she did pretty well with it. Um, but uh, she has since resigned a few years ago, and, and um, a lot like the issues that I heard tonight with staffing committees and getting volunteers, uh, et cetera, et cetera. We're also experiencing that on a staffing level. Uh, and it's just really a big ask to ask somebody to, you know, to staff that Oval Beach manager position. So for that reason, uh, we thought that maybe it would be an appropriate time to revisit this topic, see if it makes sense for us. Uh, last year, we got into a little bit of a situation where we had to pull in some resources from the clerk department. Um, sensitive subject, uh, but um, you know, just, just to make it work. And so just to kind of safeguard ourselves and make sure that we have a successful summer and that the beach patrons are getting the service and concession, concessions that they deserve, we think that this makes sense at this time. So I'll keep it brief and entertain any questions that anyone might have.
Does anybody have any questions?
Yeah, yeah, Mayor Stanton, thanks, Scott. Um, so I've been a part of that history, too, in terms of how the Oval Beach has been managed for a number of years, and it kind of ebbs and flows. Um, I'm in support of doing an RFP, but I would also suggest that we have Plan B ready to go in the event that we don't get any suitable applicants. Because that's been the issue before, is that the people that have actually responded have been vetted and have not been appropriate fit for that particular operation. So I would just say that we need to be ready with Plan B in the event Plan A doesn't produce what we would like.
Perfectly makes sense, and, and we, we definitely have Plan B. Actually, this kind of is Plan B because at the moment, you know, we've got a pretty tight timeframe that we're working with here. There are a couple revisions that I've already made in this uh, draft RFP that's in your packet. Uh, one of them is the timeframe on there. You'll see it's already a little out, outdated. So uh, I just had a conversation with Jenny Pearson from the City of the Village of Douglas and kind of got a little bit of a flavor of what they um, took on, or what she took on managing uh, in terms of the root beer barrel. So we do have a short timeframe. And as it sits at this moment, Public Works is fully planning on uh, operating the concession stand. And we'll, you know, hopefully ideally, we can just kind of go down this road. And there's a lot of questions. You know, we have to make sure that we have the right fit, you know, the right, the right company or, or, you know, people that want to staff it, and make sure that it aligns with what the city demands out of the service out there as well. So thi- this is actually kind of Plan B. Plan A is uh, we're, we're planning.
Anyone else?
Just real quick, um, off the top of your head, I know I can find out, um, I can look at our past uh, financials, but do you, do you remember just offhand roughly how much you, we profited last year from that?
Last year was not our best. Uh, it was somewhere uh, around eight, eight thousand.
Oh, eight thousand. Okay, we could probably get a lot more uh, in that in rent.
When we, yeah, that's true. What, you know, kind of when we were at our best, when the Oval Beach manager was doing this, was in a routine of doing it. Um, you know, there were years where we'd, we'd collect a profit of thirty-five, forty K. Um, but that is just not our reality today.
Right.
Madam Mayor, thank you. First, I want to thank Scott and Sarah Williams for putting the RFPs together. They've been working really hard on it. We pulled it through PPW, so it's uh, it's coming to you, to, in front of you today because uh, we pulled it through the Parks and Public Works. One of the things to keep in mind when we're talking about profit that they've made before, it's not a full-cost study, any kind of profit that he would have had if it's four thousand dollars. That's just the direct labor for the people that work there. That doesn't include all his time, going to his, you know, food safety classes. Probably the beard nets are included. I don't know about that. But I, I want to, I want everybody to keep in mind that when you, when you look at profits like that, you're not doing the full-cost study. This, I think, is a really good opportunity for us to, you know, level up in our offerings there, um, to free up our DPW, to do the things that they're supposed to be doing during this time. And, you know, their expertise is not in, you know, the hot dogs and food service, or how we're going to best operate this soft-serve machine. So um, I'd encourage us to have a robust conversation. Of course, only go with a qualified um, vendor. I, I did model that ours off of what Doug, um, Douglas did for uh, uh, the root beer barrel. They wanted a very eminent qualified uh, uh, vendor, and I'm happy to share that. That's public information for, if anyone wants to know, I have that information. I'm happy to share it with you.
Anyone else on this topic?
I'll just say, I'll, if I may, I'll, I'll just say I hundred percent support doing this, and um, I do think we should move quickly. So we do have the Plan B, as Russ uh, mentioned.
Yeah, just a, another question. So the beach operations in my mind is in two camps. You've got the concession stand, then you've got the beach itself with the uh, ticket booth, cleaning up the beach and things of that nature. So will the person, if we end up getting this to go, will that concession air be responsible for the beach operations as well with the ticket booth and?
No, no, we'll still continue that.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, um, we'll move on to the next topic that Scott um, would like you to address, which would be uh, six key equipment purpose. On page eighty.
Yeah, thank you. Um, this is gonna entail a very short video, so I apologize ahead of time for that, but a lot of us are visual learners, and so i- in a nutshell, um, we're a little bit behind the times in terms of how we, how Public Works patches potholes. Uh, currently, how we do it, there's our, the hot asphalt plant in Plainwell, and we'll drive down to Plainwell with our dump truck. They'll, uh, we'll get a load of asphalt in the back of our dump truck, and then we're, we're going as fast as we can back to Sagatuck and trying to use that product before it cools down. Um, this, this really is a much better way to do it. We're gonna end up with, um, you know, saving on materials, um, you know, less fatigue for employees, better quality product, and then ultimately the patches are gonna last longer in the street, too. So um, I, I, we do, we don't come to you with equipment purchases very often, but we do feel very strongly that this is one that we're, we're willing to stand, follow on. We did a demo of it last summer. Uh, we, we loved it, and also this is a, a piece of equipment that we can get through the Michigan My Deal program, so um, that ensures that we're getting rock-bottom pricing uh, statewide. So no reason to go out for, um, you know, for several quotes for it. Um, this is the one that we've landed on. We looked at several, and Falcon is based out of Michigan. Uh, we got to know their staff really well. We're very impressed with them, and it really seems to be the industry at, um, standard because the Algen County Road Commission has this piece of equipment. I think they have four of them. Uh, I know Douglas has one, a smaller one primarily used for cold patch, and this really, it just seems to be the gold standard. So um, maybe if we, um, if it's okay, maybe we could play the video just to have a, a visual here.
All right, does anybody have any questions for Scott?
I do. Go ahead, ma'am. I, I didn't have a question, but I wanted to make sure that I understood. I, I actually went on the ride along while we did some road repairs. And one of the things that you mentioned that I want, I think it'd be beneficial for these folks to know is that um, with this machine, you'd be able to do some repairs that right now we actually have to hire out. That's.
Yeah, uh, some of, that, that was more of a long-term vision uh, that I had. We would have to invest in a couple more pieces of equipment to do um, bigger areas of road. Um, we would love to start taking on those responsibilities. Uh, you know, like if we could shed some responsibility, like the concession stand, we could focus more on stuff like this. But um, but in and of itself, this, this, what does me, you know, if we buy this piece of equipment, you know, are we gonna see massive changes out there on the street? No. Like the, we're not gonna see that, like any revolutionary benefit out there, but it is just gonna make the work that we do uh, more permanent versus, you know, if we're putting cold cop, you know, HMA asphalt down in a pothole, um, and it's not, it's not up to temperatures back then, it's just not gonna last very long. So we're just gonna uh, over time have better patches that are more long-term and permanent.
Go ahead, Scott.
Um, once again, in support of seeing it in action, it's, it's a great piece of equipment. Save a lot of money, save a lot of time. Um, what I might suggest, though, uh, for the mayor to consider along with working with the clerk is what of these items can be put on the consent agenda. I, I'm predicting uh, next Thursday is gonna be extremely busy with the, the first four or five items we have. So love to hear from the rest of the council, but I think there might be an opportunity to put some of these lower items into the consent agenda, just so we can have a really robust conversation. I appreciate all of the uh, comments on the short-term rental issues. So if we can sort of simplify some of this stuff via the consent agenda, it might be a good use for our time on Thursday.
Yeah, I, I absolutely agree with you on that, Scott. Um, we've talked about this about a year ago when you had it. And um, I think we were all kind of, it sounded like we were all on board with, with getting this. Um, and uh, the one in the picture that you provided, is that the one that you guys used last year? That, so that, this is the same company. So this is kind of basically the same uh, thing that we're buying was the one that you used.
They discussed the draft ordinance over a couple of meetings and then ultimately made a unanimous recommendation that you approve these items.
Um, at this point, does anyone have any questions, clarifications? Any of this?
Yeah, Madam Mayor. So there's a lot of information here. I, I think all of us were at the planning commission last week, if I remember correctly. So we've all had exposure to this and. What I'm going to make is a, is a, is a, I don't think it's a radical suggestion, but given the time and given some things we have to talk about this evening, I'm wondering if we might want to consider. Like a special meeting to discuss about these issues alone, short term rental suggestions. Uh, there's a number of questions. I can easily see this going for another, you know, extended period this evening. Just putting that out there in the interest of just the attention spans and, you know, people sitting for an extended period. The importance of this discussion in my mind warrants maybe talking to this a little bit differently at this point.
Any other discussion on that? Yeah. Any other discussion?
Um, I would support having a special meet on these three agenda items as well. Um, we have seen. How important they are to our community. Uh, I've gotten unlimited emails. Phone calls the last, uh, you know, just within the last day or two, uh, since this packet came out or since last week, really since the, uh. Last planning commission meeting. Um, I can tell there's a lot more stakeholders here. Um, and, uh, I, I, I think, I think these, these, these three subjects warrant their own meeting.
And when you're saying the three subjects.
Oh, I'm sorry.
A, B, and C, or A, B, C, and D?
Um, uh, uh, A, B.
I mean, the current, as that was, we're looking at them. So zoning ordinance amendment, police powers, noise ordinance.
The, um.
Moratorium?
I would, I would go all the way to D. Yes, A for D.
Right?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I am happy to go along with the consensus, but for the record, I. Don't have any questions about A, B, C, and D. We've been talking about this for well over a year. I've read the packet. Comfortable with everything. I understand the, um, what plan, I went to attend the planning meeting. Understood every, everything that they've gone through and they've met and they've gone through this in, in great detail. Um, staff has brought it to us. Our commissions have brought it to us. Again, read the packet. We've had tons of meetings about it and, uh, ready to go.
Um, Holly?
I don't, I'm, I'm fine either way.
Okay, Logan? Yeah, and it's okay. Honestly, we, um, the packet was long, obviously. I, I had a chance to read it. I assume everyone had a chance to read it here because that's what we do. Um, if I had questions, I asked Ryan, uh, about some clarifying things with ADUs. Um, you guys want to go into more discussions on some of those? If you had any questions about, um, you know, the way things have changed per se. By all means, we can ask those questions.
I think these are a bit different and separate from the short term rental moratorium discussion. Feel like that they're. Feel like no, not very many people brought up. The other items. Um, that's kind of where I'm with it, but you know, we're not.
You know, just because I asked Ryan these questions as far as ADUs, I was questioning, um, it seems like there's some historic properties that they're allowed certain things, but if it's. Um, you're applying for a new S, uh, short term rental application and you have an ADU, could you explain that, um, maybe to our audience and everyone here how that's slightly different?
Yeah, there, uh, there are some properties that, um. I think in your, your example that, that you asked me about where, where that there's some, some properties that hey, may have like multiple like small cottages on them or, or, you know, are essentially multiple. Family, you know, but properties essentially. And so, um, and, and maybe some of those, uh, wouldn't be allowed in a particular zoning district today. Um, but they, uh, are essentially legally not conforming. And so they're allowed to continue because that use has continued for several years. And so they're allowed to have, even though. You know, for example, in the, the city's transitional districts, you might not be able to have a multifamily property today. Say one already exists. Well, then they can continue to, to, to operate that property and, and use those, you know, separates, uh, dwellings as, as short term rental units. Uh, if the property is looking to, you know, change the use or add on an accessory dwelling unit, um, or, uh. Uh, you know, maybe one of those cottages is removed. At that point, then they have to kind of comply with today's zoning rules. So over time, you, you slowly kind of bring, um, certain properties and, and structures and buildings, you know, up to whatever today's standards are.
And as far as the planning commission's intent on how this was worded with the ADUs, um, as far as having the main. Home with the ADU and combining the, um, short term rental, um, agreement, having, um, just one contract for both units as opposed to war. You know, somebody's living in the one unit and they're only renting the back, um, but not renting them out separately. The intent of the planning commission, if you could just talk about that, Holly.
You know, and RCU weigh in too. I, I think it's really to, um, to not have dual rental properties on one lot. Um, so that if, you know, if the person's living in the home and rented out. Cool or, or, um, letting family and friends stay there without the need for STR. Um, but to, to rent those out separately, just it kind of turns it into a difference. It's not like the rest of the zone. Is that fair, RC?
And then within one unit. Cause I know there's a lot of homes in our area that are one big home that might be three separate units within. Is that considered an ADU or these are questions I asked him. So, um, I think it's fair to at least share this with everyone else.
It's a situation where it's a, just a, a large home that truly is three separate distinct dwelling units. Like it's an actual multiple family. Dwelling, like you may see that like really large, uh, older homes or something like that. It's beautiful. Those on Lake Street. There are truly three separate or two or three separate distinct dwelling units, then, then yes, they could individually be short term rented. Uh, the short term rental, existing short term rental ordinance and then the, the police powers ordinance, uh, for you this evening. Would not allow a situation where it's a single family dwelling and you want to rent, um, maybe just your upstairs or just a couple of rooms within your, your house, uh, to separate parties. So. Um, that would be a situation where you certainly you could rent the, the entire home under a single contract. That, that certainly would be allowable, but to, you know, all right, I'm going to rent. This room, uh, to the one family and this room to another person under separate contracts that, uh, on a short term basis, that would be, uh, would be.
Um, you know, this is an opportunity with, you know, over the next, until our meeting. And passing dates that we end up choosing, um, to do going forward. Um, you have time, you know, the audience has time to ask specific questions. Um, email, um, RC, he's got, you know, a load of information because it can be extremely complicated and, um. And, and every, you know, with the kind of homes that we have, it, they're all different. They're so different in our community.
Holly? So, um, also the, the last planning, uh, commission meeting, which again, as somebody noted, almost every council member attended. Um, is online, um, and it had a lot of great discussion about all of the different components. So. Might not be the most exciting thing on YouTube, but, um, but it does have good, um, discussion and background. So.
Just like the Madam Mayor, you know, one of the options that you guys, you know, certainly have is, you know. Put these on your, like, you know, regular meeting agenda for next week. Have some further discussion about them. If you're ready to vote, then you're welcome to do that. If, if you're not ready to vote at that time. Table it to another meeting for further discussion. You can pass one and not the other. Those are all options that you certainly have. Or if you want to schedule an entirely separate, uh, special meeting, that, that's always an option too.
I'd consider that.
Expect a phone call or two from me in the next week.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, no, that, yeah, totally understand.
Are you all satisfied that we can do that at the next meeting, make that decision? If we're not ready to make a decision, we can either table it or schedule a special meeting at that meeting on Thursday.
Yeah, Mayor Stan, thank you for considering my proposal. Um, I, I, I have read through this in a very high level, but I've got. So for instance, on the next document, there's 16 points that were highlighted. I have questions on each of the points. So to belabor the point this evening, we'll just make everybody. The gardener, what are you doing? Uh, but I think it's worth the effort to go through to have those questions answered. So I'm more than willing to say. You know, we won't go into a great amount of detail today, but then it's incumbent on me to write my questions down, send it to the zoning administrator. So we can all have that ready to go at the meeting on that Monday. Um, I'm comfortable with that. Um, I just want to be sure that, that all those positions are respected. Um, and the other thing too is that I think it's important to hear. I mean, I, I, I have a count here. I didn't add it up yet, but there's a. You know, we had. Fifty-five, fifty-nine plus people online and we've had by my count, thirty-five people in the room and, um. It is highly unusual for this number of people to show up. Really any topic in the city in my experience. And the, thank you. Yeah. So well over a hundred people. Um, the reason I'm making this point is I think, you know, despite all of our meetings being. Openings, everything documented, minutes written, videos recorded. There's still a number of people in town that haven't gotten the information. I think we need to comment again on the council to find a way to get information out to everybody, whether it's a, I don't know, one page or something. That I can say it's in everybody's basket. And it could be, you know, because despite our efforts to say we do all this, there's still people that we don't. I don't hear.
Also, yeah, and it's not that I, I don't understand a lot of it, uh, why I'm asking for more clarification. I'm getting the same thing. I'm getting lots of questions. Of course I direct everybody. Sign up for our emails. Hey, get our packets. Hey, come to our meeting. So I guess it worked today. Um, but, um, uh, thank you for everybody I know that's out there. Um, but, um. But, uh, uh, I, I'm asking primarily because I'm getting those questions and I just feel like we can. I know, I know we've got it all out there. I know folks can get to our website. I know they can get the emails, but in this town, not everybody does that. So. Um, so I would like to see, and when it comes to going forward with some of these other things we're talking about. Um, I would like to see a, a community discussion on some of the other things involved.
Just one final thing. So the short term rental. Task force report that came, came out. Also, all of these proposals came from this. So there's, there's, there really is great background.
Been there for months.
Yep. And it's right on the website.
Yep, so.
And, and again, just, you know, and I'm not judging. I'm just saying, I respond to what I'm hearing from the. About me is, uh, and there's certain topics in town and this is being one of them. And we can see today why past councils perhaps chose not to take this on. I'm very. Very pleased that we've gotten to this point because we've never gotten to this point of discussion on this topic in this community. And it's difficult. It raises a lot of emotions and I appreciate all the comments that were made today. There's a lot to process on this. It just leads me to believe that we need to go a little bit further with this than we've gone so far, despite everything we've done. People are telling me that we should have to go a little bit further with it. Well, exactly. That looks like, I'm not sure yet, but.
Well, I encourage you all to, if you have questions, um, you know, in the audience, anyone online, all of the council members. Any specific things, you know, I sat down with him and asked him, like, but I didn't understand quite a few of the things that were on there. On it, despite, you know, listening to the planning commission meeting, that was three and a half hours long. Um, you know, it's just some things that are, can be confusing. And, um, this guy knows it all, uh, when it comes to planning and zoning. So he's really, um, been there for us through all of it and has all the information. So. With that being said, I will move on to, um, discussion item B, six B, which is the police powers licensing ordinance. It's on page 12. We might just have this same discussion, but, um, Ryan, if you wouldn't mind, um, talking about it, it's on page 12.
Certainly, Madam Mayor. And so this is where, uh, I think a bulk of the, uh, uh, plea. The short term rental task force recommendation that really proposed to be housed. And so, uh, what's before you is a, 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 a police powers licensing ordinance or a, you know, what you might call regulatory ordinance. Um, that essentially would, would regulate, uh, you know, activities of short term rentals across the entire, um, city. And so. I kind of go through some of the, the highlights, uh, from the actual ordinance language is to, that way everybody is, is have an idea of, of what's in it. Um, you know, I know it's kind of your, your first look. Um, and, and I know there's a lot of eyes on this, this meeting and some folks will watch this back. So, uh, perhaps this is a good opportunity. Um, unless you have any objections.
Oh, please.
All right. So, so essentially the, the task force, uh, report recommended, uh, switching from a, a three year of licensing or, or certificate and inspection. Uh, process to an annual license and inspection process for each short term rental in the city. And so the, the planning commission concurred with that recommendation. Uh, this, this, uh, ordinance would require, uh, that, uh, short term rental, uh, owners obtain an annual license and inspection for their short term rental units. Another recommendation that came out of the, the task force, uh, process, uh, really in, in coordination and, and talking with the, the fire department. Um, was, uh, looking at, uh, placing a, a, a limit on the maximum amount of occupants that would be allowed, uh, in a short term, um. Rental, uh, units and, and actually I, I literally met with the, uh, the chief, deputy chief and, and captain this morning, uh, to even have some further discussions on this, uh, uh, just to make sure that, uh, we were. Got a meeting that the spirit of what they were ultimately recommending, um, and essentially what the, 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 the task force and ultimately the planning commission is recommending is, is setting. Uh, I can see it two per bedroom, uh, with an additional two per, uh, finished floor, uh, uh, but not to exceed a, a maximum of 12, uh, per short term rental unit. So the, the fire department has expressed concerns. Um, and I'm going to provide this document to all of you. So you have it. We'll include it here, uh. Me packet as well, where the chief kind of talks about where the, the, the. Most fires happen in residential structures. Um, and, um, he lists kind of some of his concerns with situations where you have, um, residential occupancy at, at high levels or. Uh, on a maybe a more transient basis and some of the risks associated with that and some, some kind of, uh, why they, they've made the recommendation that they have. Um, we did discuss kind of, uh, maybe even clarifying the language even more because we know we can't account for every scenario with two per bedroom and, and, and two per floor and that sort of thing. So. Jamie, do you have that language to put the, present it to you this evening? Um, I'll just quick touch on it now, um, and then we can have some further discussion too, but. Essentially say that, you know, the fire department is setting the occupancy and they're, they're doing that really based on, obviously their inspection, you know, they're, they're. Been doing these inspections for years. And so they're looking at, you know, the building health, fire and safety codes. Uh, and then ultimately, um, we're kind of clarifying that what we mean by finished floor, and this was their concern was that it has to be, uh, it's going to be an extra two per floor. It's. We need to have adequate sleeping space on those floors for that, that active two per floor. We don't want a situation where just because you have an. You know, uh, an, an upstairs, uh, area that, you know, maybe it's just a hallway, but in, in bedrooms and a bathroom that we're not automatically, you know, looking at, at, at two, two extra occupants. So. So we worked with the, the fire department this morning on, and on some proposed, uh, language for you to consider. Um, we can come back to that. So I want to make sure and go through this list before, uh. So we'll come back to that, Jamie. So. The next piece of the, the, uh, the ordinance would have set a visitor maximum for short term rentals. So there was some discussion and concern that folks had about. Well, the occupancy for the short term rental is really a sleeping occupancy. Um, should there be some sort of limitations and how do we enforce the limitations on the number of guests or visitors that, that may be, uh, coming over? And so. Um, what we proposed to, to the, the planning commission was kind of setting it at 1.5 times the, the maximum occupancy of the. Short term rental unit. I think it'd have 1.1.5 times the number of maximum occupants visiting between the hours of seven AM and 11. Um, continuing on, all advertising will have to reference the license number. So this is kind of helpful in trying to prevent, uh, folks that maybe. Aren't obtaining their, their license, uh, properly. That if you have a short term rental listing out there on the, on the internet somewhere, that you have to actually. Ordinance required that you actually reference the license number to, so anybody could verify that it actually is registered with the city. Um, the ordinance requires certainly that, that every short term rental, so that's to comply with zoning, right? So zoning is still going to, uh, kind of dictate your signage. Um, there may be additional parking regulations. As well as, you know, where in the city short term rentals are actually allowable. Uh, we kind of talked about that a little bit with commercial districts. Um. The next piece kind of talks about really trying to inform, uh, folks that are, that are coming into town of, of some different, uh, rules and regulations. So the, the short term rental owners. Would be required to actually post the rules and regulations, uh, uh, in, in each short term rental unit. Um, they'd have to have the, the name of the license holder and local agent that's responsible, um, how to get ahold of the, uh, the individual agent if there's, there's issues. Um, on a 24 hour basis. It is kind of annoying.
Thank you, Jamie. All right.
Thank you, Jamie.
I think Jamie sabotaged.
Thank you, Jamie. That was good.
That's helpful. Although hopefully this one picks up my voice just as well. So, all right, good. So, um, uh. They're going to have to make sure and post, you know, what the maximum occupancy of overnight occupants is. So that way, you know, folks are reminded that there is a limit. Um, provide a copy of the city's noise ordinance. Um, and then, um. Write a copy of a good neighbor guide. Just kind of reminding folks again that you're, you may be in a residential neighborhood. Uh, there are, you know, other, our folks to consider that maybe aren't, you know, vacationing and, and, uh, maybe have to get up for work the next morning. Um, so a good neighbor guide will be required as well. Um, trash was a, a, a discussion point during the task force process. And so the recommendation was to, um. That essentially, you know, if you have a lower occupancy, certainly you may not need as many trash cans. So we, the, the recommendation is for, from the planning commission is one outdoor. Uh, garbage can. If you have, uh, an occupancy of, of six or, or less, but if you're at six or more, then you're looking at, at two required, uh, outdoor garbage cans and then at least one recycling bin. Um, I know recycling is a hot topic in the community. Um, but, but we, uh, intend to negotiate, uh, additional pickups, uh, with whoever the, the trash provider will be going forward. Um, so that, that's also coming down the road. So, um. We talked about this earlier. All rooms in a dwelling unit must be rented under a single contract. That provision is kind of transferred over from, um, your existing ordinance. There's a provision in here that, that the owner, um, shall not allow the use of fireworks by short term rental occupants and visitors. Um. Rental insurance must be maintained. Um, this was kind of a recommendation from the fire department, uh, in a situation that they saw where there was a, a, a loss of property and they didn't have, uh, rental. Property insurance and apparently they, that, that caused them, uh, some, some issues. Um, a registry. So, um. By applying for a li- license and owners essentially agreeing to be a, you know, have their information available in a, a publicly available registry. So. Really today, anybody can go and search and see if a property, uh, has a short term rental certificate. Uh, but going forward, uh, this registry would, would have, uh, the maximum occupancy available, uh, as well as the contact information for, um, uh, the agents. So that way if, if. If somebody has concerns and they can take their concern direct to, to the agent to, uh, to address that, that concern instead of maybe contacting law enforcement or contacting the city, they'd have the ability to, uh, to, to go direct. Um, a key piece of this that, that's included in this ordinance is that the current short term rental certificates that have been issued under the, uh, the zoning ordinance essentially, um. They would be, you know, grandfathered in, in the sense that they would. Be allowed to continue to operate under that short term rental certificate, uh, until it expires before they're really subject to the new licensing boards. So if you have a short term rental certificate that was issued, you know, today, you could continue for that, that three years. And then at that point, you're going to then be subject to the annual licensing and the, and the updated, um, regulations. Um, there's a provision in here that actually has a duty to address issues. And what that means essentially is that if you are a rental, a, agent or the person that's responsible for the property. You know, before I said that you had to be within so many miles, but there really wasn't a mechanism to require. Um, or there wasn't something that you could say, well, you actually have a duty to respond and a duty to do something if a concern is raised. And so the ordinance actually would require that, that, uh, agent, um. Respond to an actual issue that's brought to their attention, um. Uh, via phone or, or email, uh, within a, a two hour period. And so we, there's some. Write your next meeting, some, some, uh, an enforcement plan that's coming forth that, uh, I think we'll, we'll be able to present to you in, in ways that, uh, that we could kind of roll this out. Um, a suspension and revocation process is outlined. So in your, your zoning ordinance, there's provisions that essentially say if you don't comply with your permit, that, uh, the zoning administrator, uh, has the ability to, to revoke the permit. Uh, in this case, uh, we, we implement, or there's a proposed suspension revocation process that would involve, uh, a really hearing before the city council, um, and then. Uh, the ability to kind of, you know, suspend, uh, a, a, a short term rental, uh, property, uh, for a certain period of time during actual, you know, peak season. If, if there's some sort of issue where somebody's a, you know, continual, continuous violator. Um, fraudulent complaints. So on the other side, there was, there are short term rental agents and owners that were bringing up concerns. And what if somebody's making all these false complaints on me like, you know, so when those folks, if they're making a false complaint, should be held responsible as well. And so there's language in here that would do that. Uh, and then there's a provision that says that licenses cannot be transferred to, to new owners. And so that, that is lines up, um, with what your, 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 your current ordinance says as far as short term rental certificates. They also do not transfer to new owners. Um, so. The licensing ordinance essentially does the same. And where this really becomes even more. Um, uh, important as you evaluate th- th- this language is if there is a decision at some point to implement some sort of cap, especially if that cap is below, um. Where you're at now or at or below where you're at now, uh, transfer of ownership is going to be a very important topic because, um. Uh, you know, at that point, uh, you know, somebody else that buys the property may not be able to obtain a, a license. So those are just the, the highlights of the actual police powers ordinance. It includes a, a ton of recommendations from your, your short term rental task force. I don't know if mayor, if, you know, Holly was on the task forces as the chair, and then she certainly was on the planning commission. If, if I missed anything that you might want to add.
Just underscoring that the license of the vision for the licenses is that they would be grandfathered. So. Um, if everybody who has a short term rental license today would keep that license until they sold the property. So I know. A couple of people in the comment period were concerned that we, you know, that they wouldn't be grandfathered. They, they would be under the current. Vision of the planning camp, um, commission and the task force.
If I could ask a quick question in regards to that, um. With all of these new rules in place, um, they're grandfathered until their license, um, has expired?
No, until they sell the house or the property.
But there here's just a clarification on that. Um, with the new rules, um. Go into effect with a renewal of the license with the same owner. Does that make sense?
Yep, yep. I think I understand the distinction that you're making there. So, yeah. So your short term rental certificate only is good for as long as it, it was valid for in the first place. So you're an existing owner. And it has two years left. Once the two years is up, then you have to apply for, uh, the short term rental license. And then you, you know, you would, you would operate under that process. And then if there's a change of, of, uh, ownership, then, then certainly, uh, whatever's in place at that, at time would, would be applied. I. I think what you're kind of getting into is if, um, um, if we run into a situation where there, there is a cap that's put into place on, on licenses, and then you were in the short term rental certificate process. That's something that, that certainly we would have to address if that was the intent to, yep, certainly continue those on.
So to just clarify, um. No one who currently has an STR or whatever lose their license. They can, they can reapply, reapply, reapply as long as they still own the home. Um, but when they do reapply, these new rules would.
Correct, correct. But they don't lose the right. I mean, they reapply today every three years. They would just re, under the new rules, reapply every year. Yeah.
I just wanted to clarify.
It's really important that everybody understands that because, um.
That's really key. Okay.
Yes.
Anyone have any questions or clarifications, comments? Something you don't like about it, something you do like about it? Go ahead.
I, I like just about everything about it. I think you guys did a great job putting it together and I want to commend you guys for doing the hard work that. Planning commission, of course, Ryan, and the hard work you've been doing lately. Um, want to thank you for all of that. Um, a lot of these things are things that I know working at Mill Pond Realty are things that we ask our guests. We have. What you might call a good neighbor policy. They know that when they're renting with us that, uh, you know, you've got to put your garbage in the can. You can't have that many cars out. Every house has. We give everyone two or three cars and as many spaces as we have available, um, and, and, uh, and, and of course noise as well. Um, and I know that we're very, um. We're, uh, we're very proactive in making sure that, uh, uh, people do follow those. I can tell you that firsthand. I've visited many of our, uh, renters when, uh, when I've had to tell them, hey, settle down. And, uh, and they do, uh, you know, for the most part, the folks that we have visiting here, uh, we do have a, a, a clientele that visits here. Um, that are really respectful. They come to Sagatuck because they, they love our area. Most, for the most part, they're respectful. I know we have that one time a year. There's a. Certain college, uh, that comes around here. I know you folks know, um, and, uh, and they like to have a little bit, a little bit of fun. Um, the only thing that would stop me. The only thing that I think that would stop me from passing this is, um, is as we go to the, um. As we go, hold on just a second while I find what I want to talk about. Um, as we go to the, uh, am I on the wrong page? I'm sorry. Just give me just a second. I'm sorry.
But you want to speak while you're thinking that? Um, the only thing I, I would like to address is if, if these get passed, um, when will we talk about the enforcement of these? And the money involved in the fee structure associated with all of these?
Yep. So I, I'm intending on, on bringing that probably to your next meeting. Um, it's, it's pretty close to, to being there. It wasn't able to get it. They wrapped up this meeting, uh, getting an update from the, the, the fire department on what their inspection fees are, are, uh, going to be. Uh, going forward, not just for us, but for, for Douglas and the township as well. So, uh, we're pretty close. I have some, some RFPs back on, uh, some, some third party support, uh, for some, to, to help, uh, with, with some of these items as well. So I'm anticipating your next meeting, you'll have. Um, uh, kind of an enforcement plan. Um. Part of it is also, it's kind of a chicken or egg, kind of knowing, okay, well, what is your ordinance going to be? So I know what, and kind of.
I had, I asked member, I called member Anderson just because that was when I, when I went.
And I had, I asked member, I called member Anderson just because that was when I, when I went through this. I'm like, so how are we going to talk about how we pay for this money? So yeah, I got that answer. Yep.
So the idea is at the next meeting, you'll have something for us to look at, but that will also have to be decided at a later time exactly how, how we're going to pay for it.
Structure. Yeah. And you do have existing fees now. And when I say next meeting, I want to clarify, I do not mean your next regular meeting. I mean, your next workshop.
Right, right. Yeah. And then also, I'm sorry, I, thank you. It is the, uh, because it wasn't a task force recommendation. And, um, and from what I'm hearing from the crowd, I want to thank everybody who's been sending letters. I've taken notes on every single person that spoke today. Um, I'm doing a little, you know, count about how many are this, or how many are that. And, and, uh, I feel that, um, uh, that, uh, it wasn't a task force recommend- recommendation to have, a, uh, an occupancy, uh, set at 12. And, and, uh, so I can't support that, uh, knowing that we don't have a large amount of big houses that do sleep more than 12, but we do have some. Um, and, uh, I know properties in particular, uh, that have plenty of room for 12 people or more. I also understand that, that the side that it's a, uh, safety issue, um, and that, uh, I know the, uh, fire department had made mention about that. But I know it's probably just as hard to get 50 people out of a little bar or a restaurant as it would to get, 16, 17 people out of a house. So, um, so.
Go ahead, Holly.
I, I think the occupancy was part of the task force.
I believe it was as well.
And we attached as, as backup to that Gregory, the, uh, fire chief's report to us.
Okay.
Was a recommendation as far as I, you know.
Okay.
It was a recommendation.
So, so the task force did recommend that as well as, uh, and it did come as a safety issue from the fire department. Planning also.
Reading here though, what, it was not a task force recommendation. While not a task force recommendation, staff and some planning commissioners raised concern about how maximum sleeping occupancy can be enforced. That's on page 12.
So I think what you're, yeah, so that was, my comment there was related to visitor maximums. So that was, the visitor maximum piece was not part, was not.
Visitor maximum.
The sleeping, the maximum sleeping occupancy was a, a, a recommendation of the fire department.
That makes sense.
You are correct that, uh, the fire department did not recommend a visitor maximum. Um, that, that's.
It was sleeping.
Right, that, and, and, um, and again, and knowing that I believe we have houses that are safe, that can sleep more than 12 people. And, and again, if somebody owns a house, if they, I know this is a short-term rental. But what's the difference if someone owns a large house, like the house across the street from Mill Pond Realty? The family decides, hey, we want to have a reunion here. They could sleep 20, 30 people if they want, right?
So that was the recommendation that we, we don't allow more than 12 because of the safety aspect of it. Bedrooms and, yeah, that was the recommendation.
Yeah, I mean, Chief Janik was talking about how quick, I mean, it's amazing how quickly a house is consumed with fire. So the fire department's concern is being able to get more than 12, excuse me, people out safely alive.
Yeah.
So that's something we could certainly, you know, debate, uh, as a council if that wants to be included or not included in, um, what we pass.
Just wanted to let you know, that's the one thing that is kind of stalling me on this.
Thank you.
Yeah, just, um, so I will send an email to the zoning administrator because I've got a bunch of detailed questions. So I'm not going to belabor that this evening, but I agree generally with the direction this is moving. I think all of the recommendations were well thought out, well studied, it was in the report. So now it was when the rubber hits the road, when the ordinance is actually being considered to be put into law. That's where I start to really ask some real questions and about the enforcement, which is a great question, right? It's the chicken before the egg, but that has to be done. Because in order to make that happen, you have to have the enforcement. And literally, this will not happen without that. So how's that going to take place? So anyway, I, I will say those questions, but that's going to be something we'll talk about it.
Um, if there's nothing further, further on that, we could move along to item 6C. Well, you know, we changed this. So. That would be the amendment to the noise ordinance, page 29.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And, and, uh, so, uh, one of the other pieces that the, the task force touched on was, uh, uh, noise and, and, uh, some concerns that were raised related to, to noise from short-term rentals. And really, I think what, uh, your, your legal counsel, it, it was recommending, um, and, and staff as well, were, were that, your, your, your noise ordinance hadn't been, uh, updated in a while. And so there was a lot of new, uh, case law and, and, and court decisions that had come down that, um, we really need to do some cleanup as in, uh, uh, and the entire noise ordinance to make sure that it's, uh, defensible. So really not a, a ton of changes in the, uh, probably the, in your noise ordinance, other than clean up to make sure it's, it, it follows recent case law and it's defensible. Your, your so-called community, uh, quiet hours aren't, uh, really changed. Some folks during the, the, the task force process thought that quiet hours really stopped at 10:00 PM. Some people thought it stopped at 11:00 PM, really their 11:00 PM. Uh, so it's like, you know, loud music and things like that, uh, really had to die down by that 11:00 PM period. The one thing that the, uh, the planning commission did recommend a change on was changing the, uh, the allowable hours for construction noises and lawn maintenance, equipment, uh, to 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM.
Does anyone have any discussion on those recommendations? Again, these are residential areas, right? This is not in your business district?
This is for the entire city.
Citywide. Okay. Anyone want to, uh?
Well, yeah, I understand. The only question I would just ask, and I don't know, uh, Deputy, um, Phyllis here. This really gets back to the ability of the police to be able to enforce and always ordinance. And it's, it's, it's been a challenge for this town and many others in terms of, okay, you've got a law, how do you actually enforce, enforce it? My question is just have the police been consulted, have the, have the, has the sheriff's office been consulted on their ability to enforce this?
So they, so I, I did share the, the, the changes with Captain Enfield and, and saw his feedback and his, his feedback was incorporated, uh, within the, the changes that, that legal proposed.
Go ahead, Logan.
A little, little hard pressed to, outlaw, you know, uh, people taking care of their properties and whatnot within a reasonable, uh, you know, timeframe and at a reasonable volume and not creating a nuisance. I think one of my, I share this concern that some of the, the, our citizens have about the noise blower, noise, uh, issues. I find a friendly conversation, you know, can, can mitigate a lot of issues between neighbors. The times when I find that this is a real issue is the times when a conversation doesn't matter. And it's actually tied a little bit to our short-term rentals and the commercial, uh, lawn brigades that go out. That can be quite a disturbance. Uh, and you get a whole team of people out there with all sorts of equipment going. And that has been happening at all sorts of hours. So that would be, I would like to offer that as possibly an angle to kind of, um, limit this more or orient this more towards commercial activity. And even further restrict those hours, honestly, uh, and kind of let neighbors kind of take care of each other on, on when you're, when you're leaf blowing would be the only, the only question I would have on this.
So question. Can I ask him a clarifying? So, so when you say commercial, so if somebody's leaf blowing, a short-term rental at nine o'clock at night, do you consider that commercial or is that residential?
I would think if it's like a commercial operation, like somebody has a truck with a name on it and they're pulling up, that's one thing. If it's a, it's an owner resident taking care of their own property, I would find that to be a different.
But if it's a property manager doing a short-term rental, a, and I will say this just because the short-term rental across from me has leaf blowing going on at all hours. And to me, that's a commercial issue.
Yeah. Is it someone who's being, I guess the definition that, well, I would line in the sand I would draw right now, you know, would be up for a lot of conversation. But is that person actively being paid?
Yeah.
While they're doing that.
That's their job.
That would be, that would be how I would define commercial activity. But just something to think about.
Okay. Anyone else?
What is the current for construction? The current is till 11:00 PM for, for construction as well? Right. I thought that was earlier.
I thought it's the 7:00 PM. That's fine. That's going to be another question too, is a comparison against the current noise ordinance.
So currently it's 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM.
Okay. And, all right, thank you. And, and, uh, and I, I, I concur with that, um, for construction. In fact, I wouldn't mind if construction started at 8:00 AM, you know, um, but, uh, I, I, here's, here was my scenario. Holly, in, in, in all respect, um, I'm thinking about myself and I'm, I, I'm a young person and, oh, I finally got an affordable house in Sagatuck. And, you know, I'm living in, you know, a lot of whatever. And I've got a young family or whatever. I work until six or seven o'clock and it's a summer day. And I want to mow my lawn. And it's going to take an hour or two. So when we look at summertime and you know, we've got daylight till 9:30, maybe 10 o'clock. And I'm blowing, uh, my leaves. I, I understand we're construction, but a leaf blower? You know, I, I, I just, I feel like taking care of my lawn is, construction is one thing, but taking care of my lawn. I hate putting a cap on that. I, I would say like maybe 10 o'clock, maybe not as late as 11, maybe nine o'clock. But, uh, I think eight o'clock is a little bit early.
If I can interject here, and, and I want to apologize to the council for not being able to, to be present in person today.
Thank you, Jake.
Yeah, this, this, this is Jake. But I, I think maybe some of the, the confusion here, um, might be resulting for how like especially this, this lawn care provision is written. So as, as a whole, the noise ordinance prohibits noises that unreasonably annoy or disturb other people. And then there's enumerations of specific things that, if they're done in such a way so as to annoy or disturb people, they're prohibited. And then at the very end, there is that exception for, you know, a, a few enumerated items that even if the noise they're making is annoying or disturbing, it's still going to be allowed during these times. So the exception set forth for like the lawn maintenance equipment, that is saying that even if the noise you're making caring for your yard is annoying or disturbing, you're allowed to do it between 7:00 AM and 9:00 PM. It's not saying that the only time you can care for your yard or operate a leaf blower or a lawn mower is between 7:00 AM and 9:00 PM. But it is saying that even if the noise you're making is annoying or disturbing, if it's between 7:00 AM and 9:00 PM, you're allowed to do it.
Or 8:00.
It's, I, I thought they were changed to eight to eight.
It's proposed to say, the planning commission proposed.
Oh, sorry, excuse me. Yes, um, um, eight to eight.
Thank you.
But, but yeah, the, the point stands there. If it's, if it's noise that is, is, that wouldn't, like reasonably disturb someone or annoy them, then it, it doesn't fall under the noise ordinance at all.
I think that can be, you know, to me, something is noisy to you, something's not noisy, you know? I live, I live downtown. I live by Wally's. I hear the dump trucks said, or the, the, the garbage trucks at 4:30 in the morning. Are they going to have to follow this law? I also listen to Wally's, um, and it's often after 11 o'clock, but you know what? I, I don't care. I mean, honestly, it doesn't bother me. To me, it doesn't, the, 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 uh, power washing at 7:00 AM that I hear at Wally's and at the, and at the, uh, coffee house, the, uh, garbage truck that's right behind my bedroom that comes at 4:35. Those things don't bother me. I think maybe somebody else, they would consider them too loud. So.
Yeah. And those wouldn't, just so you know, those wouldn't change given, the only thing that where the hours changed was the lawn equipment.
Right.
So, yeah. So it's 7:00 AM.
So we could not to change those hours and we could keep it what it currently is, which is 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM. Or we can take the planning commission's recommendation, which would be to change, uh, construction noises and lawn maintenance times specifically, 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM. So we can choose not to do that, or we can choose to accept the planning commission's recommendation. Right? Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Anyone else have any further comment on the noise ordinance? That one's a tough one because we all have different opinions on how that should look and how it's enforced. Okay. All right. We can move on now, uh, then to, uh, short-term rental police power moratorium. Our one residential zoning district, that's page 36 in your packet.
Yes, Madam Mayor. So let's kind of just touch on a li- little bit of history, just to kind of, uh, maybe provide a little background on, on how we arrived here. I assume most of you know this, but I, again, I know that there's a lot of, uh, folks, uh, that are watching and, and, and always a good opportunity for some education. And so, so, uh, back in, uh, really late 2022, the, the city council kind of established, looking at that short-term rental like regulations as a priority for the, uh, year of 2023. Concurrently, actually, uh, in October of 2022, the planning commission, uh, set a very similar path up, uh, of looking at short-term rental regulations in 2023. So in February 2023, uh, the planning commission, uh, made a recommendation to you as a council saying that, hey, you know, you, you should form a short-term rental task force to really look at, at these issues and kind of dive in, uh, deep into the, the issues and the concerns and opportunities that there are, uh, for short-term rentals. The following month, uh, in March of 2023, the planning commission recommended, uh, approval of a temporary police powers moratorium on new certificates for short-term rentals that would have applied across the entire city. Commercial districts, all your residential districts and, 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 and you as a body took that, uh, up at a workshop meeting similar to this. Um, and at that time decided not to, to move forward at all, uh, to any regular meeting with it or, or even, and we want to vote on it at that, at that time. He preferred to go forward with the short-term rental task force process and kind of see, you know, what, what came of that. So then subsequently, the, the task force was formed. It met over the, you know, several months and finalized its, its report at the end of September. Um, and then those, uh, you know, recommendations were, were presented to you formally, uh, as well as the planning commission. And then the planning commission then took those recommendations and, and then presented the, you know, worked on the ordinances that, that you just reviewed. So, uh, one of the pieces of the task force certainly looked at was, was whether or not there should be a recommendation on caps. Um, and so I, you know, through that process, the, the task force seemed to be quite clear that, that caps in commercial zoning districts was not something that they supported. Um, and, and after, you know, a, a few meetings of discussion, um, there, there essentially just was not a consensus on, on making a recommendation, uh, on caps. And so the, the task force report language that the task force ultimately approved stated that, further review and analysis of instituting a cap on the number of short-term rentals may be required. However, for the purpose of the short-term rental task force, a consensus from the members was given that no definitive direction on caps, uh, was achieved. So the planning commission has had this as a topic, uh, uh, of discussion at the last couple of meetings. And really kind of dove in a little bit deeper at, at the February 16th meeting to kind of discuss where do the members stand on going forward with having a further discussion on whether or not there should be some sort of, uh, caps. And, and similar to the, the task force recommendations, uh, the, the planning commission, you know, uh, all agreed, you know, caps and, and commercial zoning districts is not something that the, that the planning commission was supportive of. But the, six out of the seven planning commissioners did feel that, um, looking at, uh, caps and, and residential districts or maybe even on a neighborhood by neighborhood, uh, level was something that they had an interest in and further exploring, and potentially making a recommendation on at a later date. And so, um, our consulting planner, our day-to-day consulting planner, David Drossick, uh, it kind of proposed that if, if they wanted to have further a caps discussion, we really need to do some further analysis and have some further, uh, discussion and gather some further information. So he kind of proposed four steps and looking at, you know, studying certain areas and analyzing, you know, where are the more natural neighborhoods at? You know, evaluating different factors that indicate whether there's some sort of suitability for caps, you know, you know, parking, lot sizes, area characteristics, what were the survey results that, uh, the task force, um, gathered? And then, you know, ultimately looking at, um, which neighborhoods may warrant caps. And then, uh, and then if there is a decision to do some sort of caps, what that looks like. Should it just be a straight-up cap on numbers? Should it be at a percentage? Should it be a certain, you know, spatial separation between the number of short-term rentals? And so the planning commission kind of discussed this recommendation and felt they wanted to undertake these steps, um, but that because it would take some time, in, in a six-one vote, the planning commission recommended that, uh, to the council, uh, very similar to the, the initial, uh, moratorium. They, uh, they, they recommended that the, the council reconsider the police powers moratorium on new short-term rental, um, licenses that the planning commission previously recommended, but, uh, made a couple of modifications to it. Instead of it being a moratorium across the entire city, including commercial districts, they, they, they said it should be more narrow and just focused on R1 residential zoning districts, um, which are typically your, 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 what you would think of as more, uh, like single-family home type, the type neighborhoods. Um, and that the moratorium be in effect for six months. The, the, the moratorium recommendation previously was actually for a, for a nine-month period. So what's before you this evening is really a, a discussion on whether or not you concur with the planning commission recommendation. Do you wish to, to modify the recommendation in some way? You could, you could do a moratorium in a different way or, 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 you know, make it more focused even beyond what they've recommended, or you could choose to take, take no action at all. And so I included in your, your meeting packet kind of what those R1 commercial zoning districts are, as well as a map to kind of help you kind of see, okay, well, where are these districts at? How much of the city would actually be, uh, impacted by this? Um, and then I, I did include notes. I, I, you know, I think there was a little bit of a misunderstanding last time with the short-term rental moratorium that was being proposed. And, and folks thought it was just going to, you know, put a, a stop to all short-term rental activity within the city. And, and that's not what was proposed at that time. And it's not, uh, you know, what's being proposed today, um, by the planning commission. It's essentially that, you know, if you have an existing short-term rental. uh, you know, what's being proposed today um by the planning commission. It's essentially that, you know, if you have an existing short-term rental. And and you aren't planning on, you know, selling it, you just want to continue operating as is, uh, the moratorium that was proposed would allow you to do that. Um, you know, the the uh caveat to that is that there's a change of ownership, um, but that's, that's true now for short-term rental certificates that 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 they don't transfer. So essentially, the moratorium would apply to any property that does not currently have an existing short-term rental certificate or license. So uh, the the language last time was also written in a way to where even if you were in a situation where you had an active short-term rental certificate. And it expired during the course of the moratorium, you know, some people like, oh, oh my gosh, I can't apply for a new certificate and continue operating. There was language written in there that would allow basically any existing short-term rental is, even if it expires, basically continues to be active up until thirty days after the moratorium expires. So it kind of took into account that that situation uh as well, so. I I don't have proposed language in front of you because I don't know what the direction from the council is. Um, so I discussed with our legal counsel that if the the council desires a moratorium in in some way, um, that uh you give us the framework and then we'll work on putting that into an actual draft ordinance language form. Uh, and then have it on a on a future agenda for you to go on.
Okay, open it up to discussion.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I just want to thank Ryan for clarifying that. I heard a lot of misinformation tonight during public comment, and it's fine, but I I think people need to show up and and be prepared to be educated. It's for R ones only. This is not for commercial, have at it, you know, that's, there's no caps that are being proposed for any of that in a moratorium that are being proposed for any of that. Um, if you have a short-term rental license, you'll operate your short-term rental license. If you're, if you have a short-term rental license, your grandfather didn't, you'll be able to be able go into perpetuity with that, okay? There's nothing about this that takes anything away from any of those folks, and that's what's important. It's just putting a pause on our residential neighborhoods. While we give planning and council time to figure out if there's even going to be a suggestion of caps. That's what this is about.
If, say, uh, someone has a house for sale, and I know a particular uh case, um, and I, there might be more than one from what I'm understanding now. Um, and they're selling a house that's already in our rental program that is booked for the summer. And it's a house that sleeps more than twelve, or, you know, it's it's a, you know, and uh it's booked for the summer. That when they sell that house, of course, they're gonna have to get the new license if if this was in place theoretically. Um, so that means that if it was a bigger house that did sleep more than twelve, and we uh, we did approve something like this. Um, in the middle of the sale, you know, if you're selling a house now saying, hey, this house sell, this house sleeps fourteen people uh safely and comfortably. Um, uh, the person is being sold a house that, you know what I'm saying, in 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 the middle of all of this, um, uh. Anything to take, anything to cover that, you know, uh, the property owners or anything like that.
Are are you asking about whether or not that that new property owner would be able to obtain a a license if a moratorium is in effect, or if it would?
Would they be able to during the moratorium, would they be able to uh get a license because they bought the house already with rentals in place?
Thank you. So, Mr. Whitty, I I think I'll turn that one over to you, sir.
So the moratorium would temporarily halt the issuance of new short-term rental licenses or certificates, and they're non-transferable. So in that scenario, the new owner of the property would not be able to use the property for short-term rental purposes until the moratorium was lifted.
Okay.
And eh with respect to your question about occupancy. Properties that have occupancy over, you know, the maximum of twelve right now, the way the that police power ordinance is written that you looked at. Um, they are allowed to continue running under the terms of the STR certificates issued under the zoning ordinance, which would allow that higher occupancy until that certificate expires. And once it expires, then they are required to obtain an STR license under the new police power ordinance. Um, and at that point, they'd be subject to the new limitations on maximum occupancy.
Yeah, I understand that. Thank you.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Go ahead, Holly.
So I I wanted to share, um, I mean, it, I'm, well, obviously, a lot of realtors have, you know, significant interest in this and have been pretty uniform in in the feedback provided. Um, one Realtor who has a a different point of view, I wanted to share. Um, as I was on the short-term rental task force, I spoke a lot with Dick, um, and also spoke a lot with Liz Engel. Um, and Liz has sent a a letter to council and planning that will be in our packets. Um, but she, she writes uh that the impact of a moratorium on housing values, um, she says, at this time, we are still experiencing a shortage of residential homes in Sagatuck, so I do not feel a short moratorium would negatively impact home values. So I just wanted to share that. It's just another perspective from somebody in the industry. She also said, and this was um when I was campaigning, and I I got her to approve me sharing this now, um, that uh she says that she has found that for her clients, people are reluctant to buy in a block that's saturated with short-term rentals. Which of course makes it harder for sellers in those neighborhoods to sell to people who want to become members of our community. Um, unfortunately, though, not to people who want to, you know, buy it as an investment property. So again, just to to provide another perspective from the same profession um for us all to consider.
Another spot of observation while sitting here, and I want to thank everybody that came to this meeting. And again, thank everybody for all the emails and the phone calls I'm getting. Just with everybody that spoke out today, eighteen folks were against having a moratorium, twelve were for. And three or four of yous uh said, uh, just be fair to everybody and we want balance. But those are just the people that are speaking right now. So when 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 I come out with a decision or something that I'm making, it's not something that, you know, that I'm feeling as much as what I'm listening to. And so, so again, you know, just in that everybody chose to spoke up today, got the list of everybody, their little notes. Um, we had an uh a majority of folks um that spoke out today um against the uh against the desire to uh have a moratorium.
Unless we count the letters that came in and then they're.
I'll be counting those as well, and my own letters and my own phone.
And and where they reside.
Correct, and correct. And Liz Engel, she lives in the township, correct?
Yeah, as do many, as do some of the realtors here.
Yeah, most of the folks that spoke here today, um, that on this list were residents.
Russ, did you have something?
Yeah, Mayor Stan, um, so when I was on the planning commission, when this first came to council, I was a yes for the moratorium, and that was one vote. Out of all the votes I've taken that I truly regretted, I should have not have voted yes for that to come forward. When it came to council, I voted no. The reason I voted no was because I did not see a compelling reason for a moratorium, and to what many of the speakers said today, what's going to be the economic impact of that decision? That is remain to be determined. So I'm asking myself today, uh, I wish I could say next Thursday, I'm a yes or a no, I don't know. A lot of good information came through today, a lot of great comments. I mean, it was literally almost two hours of comments, and I loved it because it just gave me some perspectives I didn't have. So as I stand today, when I'm presented with a situation like this at council, I'm like, okay. What really is, would compel me to change my mind from my previous decision? And I'm s- I'm still struggling with that, so I just, I'll just leave it with that.
Same here.
Okay, Helen?
Nothing.
Okay, Logan, anything? I didn't need to put you on the spot, you don't have to say anything.
Just like to thank the planning commission and the STR task force uh for their extremely diligent work on this. I've learned a lot throughout this process, uh, paying attention to those meetings and also listening to our citizens. I don't know, I'm gonna have to learn a lot more in this week, um, as this continues. Really, really eager for more feedback. I really appreciate everyone that that came out tonight. It's really important that you do that. We need to know what you think. And, because this is a decision that will affect all of us in a major way. I'm extremely hesitant to weigh in on things like this that I feel like are going to have such an impact. Um, and tell people what they can and can't do with their property. I know that's kind of what we do as a government as a whole anyway, but um, we do a lot of that, but this is, this is an interesting one. And unless, you know, there's, there's something that feels very clear that is going to cause harm or is actively causing a lot of harm. And this one's particularly tough because there's a group of people that think that a lot of harm is being caused right now, and there's a group of people that think that there's a lot of harm about to be caused by this. Um, so that's, that's really tough. And I'm hearing it, and that's, that's just. We need, we need to look at this, so.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Um, anything else?
I guess one thing that I would say that I think people need to take into consideration is that, um. And again, anecdotal, what you hear from the residents is that there's an appetite for caps in residential neighborhoods and residential neighborhoods. If we fail as a city to evaluate that moratorium, come back with some suggestions. There's absolutely nothing to stop the community from coming up with a ballot initiative, and that then our hands are tied. And that will be probably much more draconian than anybody here would implement. Keep that in consideration. It takes fifteen percent of the active electric to get something on a ballot. I think I calculated it to be about a hundred and twenty-eight signatures. I think you could probably get that walking down the street right now. For people to put this on the ballot. So while you're deliberating and and you and you're afraid to make a decision, I get, there's a reason it's taken so long to get here. Because it's not a popular topic, because the easy thing would be to do nothing. I like easy. I got better places to be, okay? This is an important topic. The the public, the people who voted for us to be here are expecting us to do something. If we fail, they're gonna come up with something and probably not gonna like it. Keep that in mind. So the other thing, a point I want to make on in terms of values and the the economic impact or financial impact, Charlevoy had no um impact hit to housing values when they put their cap in. So, and Charlevoy, it's a pretty, I, it might not be a hundred percent tourism like we are, but they're in the nineties. So I think it's fairly comparable in terms of a tourist economy. The other thing too, and again, thank you to Dick for sharing um a lot of data with the task force. Um, housing, so I moved here in twenty eighteen, um, and from then till about, you know, the task force last summer, housing prices had gone up fifty percent in Sagatuck. So i- and the last two years have been kind of plateaued. It wasn't, it was a pretty steep rise and then kind of plateaued. So unless somebody bought their house two or three years ago and sold it, even if housing prices go down somewhat with this, and again, it didn't happen with Charlevoy, but if we took some pressure downward on housing prices. People aren't gonna lose money. They might not make as much money, but um, you know, if you, I mean, if I, you know, even, I mean, I whatever, I would still, I mean, fifty percent's a lot of money for me um in five years. So I I'm not, I'm not minimizing, we all want to, you know, make as much money on our assets as we can. But there's also the value of the asset of a neighborhood, and um, you know, we had somebody write back into us today, and it'll be in the packet. Um, and attached a letter he wrote to the task force that um talks about much about, has been said about the prospective negative impact on property values of short-term rentals are limited. Very little has been said about the negative impact to the value of private residences that are adjacent to short-term rentals. And I, and that gets to the point that Liz made of um, people don't want to buy into a neighborhood that's filled with short-term rentals. So that's it for me.
We have, um, you know, our houses uh here on the hill and in the area here, even if we did have a cap and and you're saying, and the prices don't go down a whole lot, do you really think that small families could still afford these houses on the hill?
I don't know who, I don't know if small families could, I I do.
You know, young families, uh, first starting out, like you're, you know, that would feed into our school systems and and uh and and that kind of a thing, the kind of community that.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I think it's unrealistic, and especially, I mean, even if we put in a cap today that was lower than what we had, the number, I mean, we have thirty percent of our houses now, citywide, are short-term rentals.
And I'm not saying that's not a problem.
Right, no, no, no. But so if we put, say we put a cap in, I'm popping my peas, um. It it would take years to get to, I mean, it, attrition will be slow. So, um, so do I think families will be moving in immediately? No, but we might get more people who live here you know, full-time, or who live here, you know, seasonally. And so we have neighbors again. I mean, I've lost, you know, I've lost four sets of neighbors in the time I've moved here. And I I miss having neighbors, and I, and that's what I hear from people who want both the moratorium just to kind of freeze where we are until we decide what we do. And, you know, council may decide not to to do anything in terms of density. Um, but um, but people miss having neighbors in the neighborhood, and I'm, I'm one of those people.
Okay. I live downtown here in Sagatuck in the city, and I love my neighbors that I've had for many years.
Yeah.
So I I guess it depends on where you are, and any corner could be different, or, you know.
Right, well, at this point, go ahead.
So, so Madam Mayor, I just need to, you know, it's gonna be a little direction from council on it. Do you, do you at least want legal to prepare the moratorium for you to at least consider the language and and ultimately make a decision on it? I need it, we need enough, whether you want that at least drafted.
Yeah, I mean, at this point, um, I mean, it's, it's tough, we still have time to think about this, this is, we're not holding a gun to anybody's head. But do you want legal to go forward um with drafting language of a moratorium? If you choose to do that, I'm just going round robin here. Logan?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Gregory?
I'm, I'm not prepared to, I can't answer that. I'm not prepared to vote on that.
Yes.
Uh, I'm a no, further discussion and thoughts needed.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. And I'm a yes on just having it prepared.
Yeah.
Um, to look at it, um, and to make sure that, you know, we can look at it, and then we can always decide one way or the other, but to at least go forward with what that looks like.
Just real quick, it's, it's something that just came up, you know, uh, at your meeting, at your last planning commission meeting on the fifteenth. So it's something new, and I'm still getting a lot of feedback about it, so.
And that's fine, and if if we feel confident, at least, you know, having him draw up the um, the language, we can look at it. We don't like it, we can vote no, yes, whatever, you know, going forward, but at least, you know, we're off.
Yeah, I I can, yeah, I I agree with that now, um, after explaining that, yeah, I agree.
All right. Thank you all. I know it's difficult. I know it's difficult.
Very, very much so.
Okay, um, so again, no decision has been made. Um, we still have a lot of time to think through this and, um, you know, get more questions answered, but we are at least authorizing our legal counsel to draw something up for us to look at.
Okay.
Okay. All right, we are going to move on now uh to the intergovernmental agreement, minor revisions to Blue Star Trail Phase Two. This was on page forty.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So uh, back in uh April of last year, you uh approved uh intergovernmental agree agreement with uh the city of the village of Douglas and uh Sagatuck Township. Um, that essentially kind of outlined uh uh payments uh for some of the design engineering for the overall Blue Star Trail. Um, and and you should conceive from that agreement, uh, the friends of the Blue Star Trail, uh, thank goodness for them, they're, they're, they're doing a lot of fundraising and and paying for a lot of that.
Just a pizza.
Yeah, right.
I'm sorry.
Okay. But they're doing a lot of that, covering a lot of those design costs. So after the, uh, your approval, uh, we heard back from the 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 township and and Douglas, and they just had a couple minor revisions that were proposed. One was this kind of little bit of a language cleanup in section four, just to clarify that it was the city of Sagatuck and city of of, or I'm sorry, Sagatuck Township. Uh, and then it changed to section twenty, which really relates to, like, if there was ever a dispute, instead of going, you know, straight to a court, that we'd be required to actually try to uh do non-binding mediation. So very minor revisions, uh, but we just want to make sure that that uh, that the council's approving of the minor revisions, so then we can make sure that that that's uh fully executed. It's kind of more just a cleanup item for for you to consider at your next meeting.
Okay. Any questions on that one?
Nope.
All right, we'll move along then. Uh, appreciate it, RC. Um, on to the revocable license agreement, Grow. Thank you for your patience. RC, if you want to handle it from here?
Yeah, so, uh, yeah, Grow Estate, I'll, I'll see, uh, is uh looking to uh open a new uh restaurant at at six fifty Water Street. Um, they they described a bit, that it's kind of a Tex-Mex kind of uh establishment. Um, so, um, uh, it's part of their site plan approval by the the planning commission and the historic district commission. They're proposing a a new sign uh at that location, the sign that they're looking to uh kind of replaces in your city right-of-way. So it requires city council approval, um, uh, to make sure that you're good with uh that sign continuing to be placed on your, your uh city right-of-way.
Okay. Any questions on that?
Mmm, tacos.
Only comments is that as long as they continue to do as great of a job as they did over here, give them what they need to go to get up and running, yes.
We're not done with Grow. We're not done with Grow because on page fifty-six, we have one more item with Grow. The folks from Grow, because it'll be a new name. But go ahead.
That is true, Madam Mayor. And so as, as part of their, their, their restaurant plans and site plan approval by the, the planning commission. And historic district approval, they propose some outdoor seating. Initially, they had plans for both the north side and the east side. At this point in time, they're only asking you to approve outdoor seating. And then some, some supporting items of that, some planters. And a kind of a waste and recycling collection and container, the tables and chairs. So that requires a revocable license agreement. Like I said, they already got their, their historic district and planning commission approvals. So they need your permission to use the public space. An attachment to the, the proposed license agreement kind of shows you what that layout would look like. So there's still a sidewalk area that's, that's being maintained. So plenty of pedestrian access still.
And did I notice that they took away the seating that was by the boat launch?
Correct. Yeah. No seating is requested on the north side. They may revisit that in the fall, which would come back to you for any, any sort of approval if they were to move forward with that request.
Russ?
Yeah, Mayor Stanton, thank you. I just want to thank the applicants for making that change. There was some discussion at the historic district commission about the use of the boat launch. With picnic tables essentially by where the boats come in and out. And I just appreciate them listening to the conversation and making that change. Thank you.
And I just have to say, good luck. We're so excited to have you down there and we just know it's going to be fantastic. So thank you for everything you guys have done in our community. Anyone else?
Just that I absolutely echo the comments and looking forward to whatever you come up with over there. And you did a beautiful job with your seating and your planters over here. I have no doubt that will continue. And we're very happy to have you fixing that area. Thank you. And thank you for your patience through this long meeting.
Thank you.
Yeah, I read, I read Tex-Mex is becoming America's favorite.
I believe it is.
Someone who, you know, enjoys Tex-Mex myself and a neighbor I live a block away from there. I'm very excited. So this is very good.
Sagatuck. I'm here for it.
All right. We'll move on to the revocable license agreement for Scooters Cafe and Pizzeria on page sixty-two.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I, I, yeah, so Scooters, no real changes in their, their layout from prior years. They actually had zoning approval several years ago because there's no changes and they were ready to get any sort of updated zoning approvals. But again, need your approval to, to use the public space. So in the past, the city was kind of approving these on a year to year basis. And one thing that we've kind of. You know, wanted to kind of incentivize, I guess, with our owners is that, you know, we would try to find a way, along with your in agreement with it, to extend this process. So where they're not coming back year after year, even for, you know, city approval. And so what, from a staff perspective, and I should have mentioned this on the last agreement, it was for a five year agreement for the, the, the use of the space. I'm, I'm recommending that you approve a five year agreement, a license agreement with Scooters. If there's issues or the city needs the property in another way, or there's a policy change in direction from a future council that they want to do something different. It is a revocable license agreement that, that, that you could choose to revoke the language in its state. So you could revoke it for no reason at all. So it's still your discretion as a council, but.
But it'll be for a longer amount of time. And so they don't have to keep coming back as long as they haven't made any changes.
Correct.
I like that idea. However, if I can ask real quick, if the business sells, which it is for sale right now, would that a five year revocable license go along with the sale? Or would it, would they have to reapply?
So the new owner would have to have a revocable license in their name. And there's some language in there that kind of says that it's non-transferable unless the city were to officially agree to it.
Thank you.
If there's nothing else, we will move on to a revocable license agreement for Boardwalk Cafe, page sixty-eight.
Very similar, Madam Mayor. This was some seating that was recently approved by the planning commission, historic district commission. They're not proposing any changes from their temporary license approvals during the pandemic. Again, this would be for a, a five year agreement.
Anything there?
No changes you said at all to the layout or any of that?
Correct.
Great. Okay.
Right. So then we're going to skip down to social district permit for Grow Estate. It's really Grow Estate right there, LLC.
Grow Estate.
That's on page eighty-nine. So asking for a social district permit.
So Madam Mayor, did you think that I got that wrong?
Oh.
I appreciate it. Please double check me. Yes. So, Madam Mary, yes, so six fifty Water Street, that location is within the, the city's social district boundaries. And so they're, they're asking to, for your approval to, to have their establishment included within that. So it requires local government approval before they apply to the state.
Anything, any discussion items on that?
Just to thank you, Lisa Mize is still here. You've done a great job with that map and, and, and it's very easy to read. And lets everybody know where you can walk around with your drink. Thank you for supporting the social district and everything the CBB's done to do that.
All right. Well, we'll keep moving on.
Okay.
Right of way sign, SCA event, page ninety-three.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm going to turn this one over to our city clerk and give her a little mic time tonight.
Oh, good.
So this is, this is housekeeping. Every year, the SCA is very nice and puts all of their right of way signs that they want to do for the whole year on one application for all their events. And including also the right of way signage that they put on the parking spot in front of the SCA, which is the second application here. But for the first one you're looking at, this is for all their events. And this is just for right of way signage throughout the city to promote their events. But I included all the dates of each event that they're going to be advertising those signs.
Does anybody have any discussion on that? So then we will keep going then with the right of way sign permit for the SCA interurban parking, which is what Jamie just mentioned.
Yep. And you approved this last year and that just leaves that parking spot out there in front of the SCA for the interurban to pull up and drop people off and pick people up.
All right. All right, Jamie. Thank you so much. We will then move on to board of review appointments on page ninety-nine. And. That is, okay, so I had an opportunity to interview the gentleman there. As you can see, I will not try to pronounce your last name. Will you say it for me? Thank you. But I am recommending the appointment of David to the board of review with the term ending January first, two thousand and twenty-six. Does anybody have any questions? His application is there so you can.
Just thank you for your willingness to serve, sir. Appreciate it.
Anyone else?
Welcome to the party.
I appreciate you, your willingness to serve. So that will be on the meeting agenda for Thursday. Let's go to public comments on non-agenda items or anything. You can do agenda items or anything you'd like to speak on. So if anyone would like to speak, please go to the podium, state your name, first and last name and where you live.
Diana Decker, one twenty-eight C, Elizabeth. Usually municipalities will put a moratorium on when there's issues with safe, healthy. Not many governments will put a moratorium on. For that. So that's why. The hardship, you know, there's, I'm concerned about if someone needs to rent their home. And they're having a hardship or they have to go take care of a family member. I had a neighbor that had that situation where she had to go and take care of her mother in another state and rent her property. And then, you know, things like that. I don't see that anywhere in here if you're going to do a cap. Ryan, you were mentioning, there was an example with selling someone's pending a home that Greg was mentioning about. If that home sells, why the moratorium, is there a cap, then they wouldn't be able to get a certificate. Is that correct?
Is that discussion just public?
Oh, sorry, sorry. So that's what, you know, I would like to see the city council send back. You know, I went to a lot of the task force meetings. I live on this, on the hill. So I know about the noise. I know I've called the police before, so I understand this. And I went to many of the task force meetings. So I would like to see the city council. Send back, you know, have the planning commission. Make their recommendations, you know, go over it, have their studies, do their study. What, what neighborhoods, what street maybe is that we should be putting a cap on? I'm really concerned about placing a moratorium on all of R one. This, oh, I'm a little about the special accessory dwelling. Okay. If you have a home here, two cottages, you're saying that one, that they're going to need a special use permit. That is my concern there. And maybe I'm reading this incorrectly. Regarding that, that owner would need a special use permit. That, that use is already being allowed. So why would they need a special use permit? So that's what my concern, concern is there. I've only served eight years, elected twice, two terms. I served eight years on a board. I was very lucky to work with three assessors. I was a township treasurer. So I'm just concerned about some of these items here. Thank you.
Anyone in the room? Would like to speak?
Hi, Tammy Kerr. I live in the township, three one nine one Beach Trail Drive. I've lived in the city. I moved out of the city. Because I had small children and we needed room to roam. So. I love living in the city, but yes, it is noisy. Doesn't bother me. It might bother other people. But I chose to move out to have peace and quiet. And I'm surrounded by rentals out there too. So we have four in our neighborhood, but I still have neighbors. I just have to walk and find them. I don't have a problem with a lot of the things that you are discussing. I have a problem with the moratorium. I sell a lot of real estate and I know there's other people in my office that are retiring now and are voice in their opinion, but they don't sell anymore. I just want to say I have a house that is selling on the hill. It is currently rented and it's booked all year. They are closing in the next three weeks. They've already paid for their loan. They've paid for their appraisal. They've paid for their home inspection and we are waiting to close. And now you want to put a moratorium on? So they can't close? They don't have that as an out. That means they're going to be forced to buy. And now they have wasted a lot of money, six hundred and nineteen thousand dollars for a two bedroom. That's a lot. And if I were them, I would sue the city if I get stuck in that position. So I'm just saying, that's just one. But I have also sold other. Homes in the city recently that they are not going to rent. They're going to finish out the rental. And then they are not renting. They are moving here permanently. So your, your data, I think, is very skewed. A, you looked at it a year ago. You're not looking at it today. You took numbers that were from COVID and COVID was, I mean, that's an anomaly. That's not going to happen ever again. It pushed our prices up. It made everybody flood from Chicago in here and it's a joke. So I really think you need to look at numbers again. I really think you need to have somebody come in and assess what it's going to do to the community. And then my other thing is. There was the time. There's no way I could mow my lawn before eight, eight o'clock if I lived here. I don't get done working until ten. So that means my lawn would never get mowed. And if I have to hire someone, then it, it's a commercial person? So it just doesn't make sense to me. But anyway, I don't see anything wrong with the times that we already have. I don't know why it has to be changed. I don't see anything wrong with the policies that were in place. They just needed to be enforced. I just don't think the city as a whole has done their job. And they need to be accountable. And that's all I want to say. Thank you.
Anyone else in the room wish to speak?
Laura Durham, seven forty-seven Water Street. I guess I have a lot of thoughts after listening to this. It appears to me that there's a lot of minds made up. Doesn't matter if there was seventeen people versus three people or whatever, minds are done. Numerous people brought up an economic study. None of you talked about that. So it must not be important because even though so many people brought that to your attention. Not one person thought that was important to find out, well, how would this affect us? That's painful. I mean, it's almost emotional after sixty years of living here that nobody seems to care because their mind is made up. Because they're feeling as one set, because they don't like their neighbor, because it's something personal. This isn't personal. Might be to some new people have moved here, but to the people who've grown up here, chose to stay here, not move away and then move back. Why doesn't anybody care? Why doesn't anybody care about the city? And I hope it gets, so everybody understands that nobody seems to care. Their minds are made up. They don't need a study. They don't care what it's going to do. Let's just put the moratorium on. Let's do caps. It's painful. It's, it's very painful. The other thing that was sort of discussed today on more than one occasion, but not, not the other side. So Tammy talked about a sale. The property is rented. I can tell you have another one. It's rented. You put in a moratorium. There's people who've paid money. They could have gone anywhere that they wanted. Because we still have businesses open. They chose to come here. They paid their money a long time ago. When I reached out to the office this week on Monday and said, what about the poor people who've already paid to come here this summer? It's not our problem. Well, it is your problem because you are the one making that choice to tell them, too bad you've paid your money. You're going to get your money back because the new people buying it cannot honor your rentals. I think that should be discussed. That's something to talk about, in my opinion. But instead, we're going to argue over a neighbor. Cleaning their yard up is sad. It makes me emotional. Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Anyone else in the room? All right. We will move on to the online hands raised. Sev, if you could unmute yourself, state your name and where you live.
Hi, so it's Severn Nowicki speaking again, eight four one Holland Street, Sagatuck. I know you cannot answer my question, but I, I guess I have a question which I would like to state in regard to the inspection for short term rentals. It seems like the idea is to change it from three years to one year. And I, my question is why, what's the reasoning behind that? Also, does the fee stays the same for the inspection? Assuming that the fee stays the same, that basically indicates three times the amount of the revenue for the city in those, in those three years. So another question would be what's happening with that money? Does the fire department actually get the money? And does this help us solve the issue of financing the fire department which we, which we had in the past? So those are the questions I have, but I know you cannot answer them. But thank you anyway. Thanks.
Thank you.
Severn.
Brad, if you could go next. Brad Ba.
Hi there. So I have just a couple of questions.
State your name and where you live.
All right. I think I've done that every single time I've been on one of these. Brad, sixty Brook Street, live over in, in Hamilton, just off Old Alleghanmore. I have a couple of questions that I want to just make sure get, get put out there. I know that they can't necessarily get addressed. But I keep hearing this, just R one. R one is a significant portion of the actual landmass of the city. And yes, I know it's that the, it's the R one residential district, but there's also residential housing in C four, C two, R four and R two. So will those residential houses also be impacted by any potential moratorium, or single family houses, I guess I should say? Be impacted by any kind of moratorium on here? Or is the planning commission essentially picking winners and losers in terms of who can continue to get a short term rental certificates? If a moratorium were to go into place? My property is in an R one. It's over by the, up by North Avenue. So I would not be able to sell that property and let that new owner get a, a new certificate. But somebody in like the Water Street Property Zone or the Lake Street Property Zone would be able to. So how is that equitable and justifiable or defensible from the council standpoint? The second kind of question that I have is even how this whole moratorium conversation came up. I've been following the, the planning commission's agendas and meetings and things like that. And given the statement by, I believe it was CJ, that this wasn't even on the agenda and it just came up the last minute. I genuinely question if there's a violation of Michigan's open record laws. And if there's conversation happening amongst planning commission members or council members outside of public discourse, that is a violation of Michigan's open record laws. So I'd love if somebody could potentially touch on that in the next council meeting or kind of explain how these things are coming to council or to. Commissions without a clear indication of who's bringing them up and where they're coming from. The third thing is a really small thing, but I very much agree with a lot of the ordinances that are going into place. I have a short term rental that sleeps, that I allow to sleep eight. It can actually probably get up to ten or twelve. I cap it at eight because I don't want to deal with the people. I have to lie to Republic Services to get two trash cans. They will not give me two trash cans because they say that the city will not allow me to have two trash cans. So I had to lie and tell them that there was a. So I had to lie and tell them that there was a different apartment at my units or at my building to get the second can. So if that's going to be something in the ordinance, whatever agreement this council has with Republic Services needs to be dealt with. And then I have one other kind, one of two other questions, so I'll try to make it quick. Moratorium conversations last year had a massive push. I believe Steve Manz had mentioned that for new applications. Does this council yet know how many active rentals are in this town or are we actually going based off of the number of licenses that exist? And how many licenses are for properties that aren't being rented out because people freaked out the last time the moratorium came up? And that's my time, so I'll have to skip my last question.
Right, thank you. Moving on to Greg, if you can unmute yourself, give us your first and last name and where you live.
Yep, Greg Auer. I'm at five forty-eight Hoffman Street on the Hill in Sagatuck. I only have one comment that I asked the group and the council to, just do your due diligence on research. Palm Springs recently wanted to get rid of and complained about all the noise in the party, in the party houses that were happening in Palm Springs. They imposed twenty percent caps in neighborhoods. The article in the LA Times, which any of you can go and Google search and read, as well as KTLA in Los Angeles, sales are in a freefall. Home prices are in absolute freefall because of these caps. Just to, I know there was a woman who just spoke up in the room. Do the research is all we're asking you to do. And that's my only comment to the group and thank you for your time.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Brian Elmore, unmute yourself and give us your first and last name where you're living.
Thank you, Brian Elmore, nine-eight-five Ridgeview. I just wanted to say, you know, I basically attended almost every one of the short-term rental task force meetings, mostly from afar, but participated in it, you know, gave my time. There's members of the, you know, the community that gave a lot of their time for the short-term rental task force that we paid a lot of money to engage with a third-party professional to give input. We spent a lot of time collecting feedback from the community. There was a point when a moratorium all of a sudden again snuck out of the corner and the community revolted because it's a terrible idea. But it's very clear that there are some members of the planning council that have an agenda. And even though a moratorium was not part of the recommendations of the short-term task force by any means, never even discussed after that time that it was brought to council and maybe shelved, here we are, kind of out of the blue. Everyone kind of thought we had a nice, beautiful set of recommendations from the short-term rental task force. We all read it. There's things in it that I think are amazing that are going to actually have a lot of impact on the pain points that people feel related to short-term rentals. But before we've even implemented a single change, all of a sudden, we've got people that are trying to throw a moratorium out there. And quite frankly, whether the moratorium goes through or not right now, just even the fact that we're discussing it at a council level impacts home sales. It impacts, you know, the ability to close on a home. It impacts the ability for someone to sell their home because they don't know what they're selling anymore. Because there's just a question mark out there. So again, I think that, you know, there definitely should be an economic impact study. And also, just, you know, to reiterate what others are saying, do your due diligence, please. I just, I beg of you to do your due diligence because we put together a task force. Everything seemed to be going in the right way. It seemed like a very democratic process. And yet here we are discussing ordinances and recommendations that weren't even part of the short-term rental recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Brian.
Mark Klungle, up next.
Mark Klungle, seven forty-seven Water. I wanted to speak about the maximum of twelve in a home for a vacation rental. There are only ten homes inside Sagatuck that will hold more than twelve people. There's a, there is a big need and a short supply of homes that for big families that want to come here and vacation in Sagatuck. The houses are available. There aren't many of them, but there are very few homes. But to put a cap of twelve on a, you know, seven-bedroom home or otherwise, it not only hurts the owner, it hurts the families that want to come here. So I think that needs to be looked at. Now, the, the fire department has always and still will put a cap or a number on the number of people that can be held in a house. It's done every time. I do every inspection still with the fire department. That means I'm doing forty or more inspections a year with the fire department. And they set a cap based on how the house is, is available for them. And that's based on the size of the bedrooms, how many it'll hold and the access and they look at that. So to try to force a cap in here is really not going to, going to help in a sense that, you know, you're talking ten houses. And if you extended even the maximum to fourteen, that would take six more off that list. There's only four houses in the town that will hold more than, four houses that will hold more than fourteen. So that is one thing. The other issue is on moratorium caps. Those moratorium and caps are very negative solutions. I would hope that we could reach deeper and look for some solutions that would, would find a better way to build neighborhoods. Seventy percent of Sagatuck houses are non-homestead. A majority of those are second homes for people that don't rent. Only about twenty, yeah, about less than thirty percent of those are short-term rentals. So out of that, you know, even if you eliminated all the short-term rentals, how are you going to fill them? What are you going to put? How are you going to build neighborhoods? Is there any plan to build neighborhoods? Is there a tax plan or otherwise to build a neighborhood? So I, I think that we, rather than look at negative solutions, let's look at positive solutions or trying to find a way to build the neighborhoods.
Mark, thank you so much. Anyone else online, Jamie, that you see with their hand raised? No. Okay, all right, that ends our public comment section. And at this time, we will be going into closed session.
Of course.
I'll eat a motion first, but I just need everyone. First, correct?
No. You don't, you can, you can. Motion and then everyone will leave. You just motioned to go into closed session.
Okay, Madam Mayor, first of all, do we have to talk about the correspondence and? Okay, okay.
All right.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
A motion to enter into closed session to discuss confidential written legal opinion regarding a personnel matter pursuant to MCL one-five dot two-six-eight one H.
Do I have a second?
A second.
All right, this is a roll call vote. Anderson?
Yes.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Bean? Gardner?
Yes.
Muncie?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mayor.
And do we have time to take a bath?
Thank you.
My eyeballs are.
Still, excuse me, I need to put people into, you're still on. Okay. Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I'm going to put people in wait. Take just a five-minute break and.
Yes.
And I apologize that you're having to wait this long.
Oh, golly.
I know. So the microphones are still on, just so you. Okay, welcome back, everyone. We are back into open session.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the city attorney's recommendation to negotiate a resignation agreement consistent with the parameters discussed in closed session and to authorize the mayor and clerk to execute the same.
I'll second.
All right. And at this point, we, it would be a roll call vote, correct? Anderson?
Yes.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Bean? Gardner?
Yes.
Muncie?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, and we are on to correspondence. We have a board vacancy notice. It's on page one oh six. It is for, well, there's a couple of them, aren't there, Jamie?
Was there anybody, I'm sorry, wait a minute, was there anybody outside?
Oh, not that one. I didn't know. Sorry, that's okay. Thanks. We can pause for a moment.
Sure.
Jamie, wouldn't mind. The board vacancies?
Yeah, so Parks and Public Works Committee, Glenn DeYoung is, she's moving out of the city.
Yes.
And then Cow Lake is Barry Johnson's term is expired.
And with, as far as Barry's concerned, I believe he's going to reapply for the position, but yes. But all, you know, it is open, so others can apply as well, but he did indicate that he was interested in reapplying. But we do have to post it because his term had expired.
Well, it's per your boards and committees' resolution that all openings need to be posted.
Great, Jamie, thank you. All right, on to council comments. I'll start with Holly.
Long meeting. Nice work, everybody.
Sleep well.
I just want to thank everybody who showed up to voice their concerns and their questions about short-term rentals and that. Takes, again, it takes a village and we aren't always going to agree, but we are all in agreement that we are working for what's best for the city and I appreciate everyone's time tonight.
Thanks, Helen. Gregory?
I appreciate working with everybody here. We might not always agree on everything, but I absolutely enjoy working with everybody here. I think we're doing great things right now. I think we're tackling issues, big issues, that we haven't seen tackled in the city in a long time. We should all be proud of the work that we're doing right now, so.
Hogan?
We have over a hundred people. Is that what we saw?
Yeah, it was a lot.
That's amazing.
Yeah.
Really, really love hearing from everybody. Just appreciate the time that, it's a lot of time. It's a lot of time that this community is just considering this and I hope that that continues. We continue to see that. So thank you.
All right, thanks, everyone. At this time, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll second that.
All those in favor say yes.
Yes.